I like to call the call to order the meeting of the Grattan Board of Education being held on January twenty seven, twenty twenty five at six o'clock. It's being held in person and online. Um, today in attendance, we have Matt Schulman, Jen White, um, Melanie, our student rep, Dean Antipas, Ian Thomas, Adrian Johnson, myself, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, we have Jay online and anybody else online?
Dr. Ackerman.
Dr. Ackerman?
Yes.
And what about Mike Whitney? No? Okay, is there, you said, yeah, yeah. Okay, the first thing on agenda is pledge allegiance when we all stand. Take our hats off, thank you. Thanks. No, no, it's just, people say it all the time, if you can stand up and please take your hat off. It wasn't directed at you, it was this comment being made. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan. Thank you. Okay, the next one is recognition and participation of visitors and delegations, I don't think we have any. The next item is comments from citizens in regards to agenda items and other subjects of concerns, concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to manners, matters pertinent to Grattan. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comment to citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. Would anybody like to speak tonight?
All right, I feel like I'm in your face, sorry about that. Uh, Portia Bordelon, twenty four Jefferson Drive. For full disclosure, I'm a town council member, for full disclosure, I'm also Ian Thomas's Board of Education's spouse, former pair in the district, as well as a Fitch High School graduate. Again, uh, twenty four Jefferson Drive, so I guess my concerns tonight is, uh, for all the complaints, recommendations for improvement on last year's budget process, this year seems to be very much the same so far to me. Incomplete, disorganized, um, and riddled with errors. As you know, I'm a town councillor, so I'm doing my due diligence since the Board of Education budget is more than, what, seventy something percent of the town's budget? So I come to these meetings where I watch online everyone, every budget meeting, and even if I miss it, I rewind it and watch it again to make sure I take my notes, prepare for my time to take the budget. It's unclear to me when the superintendent will complete the budget. So I know there was a consensus from a lot of the new members on here that there'd be a concise timeframe. Uh, it just seems unclear, numbers are changing. I understand that they said it's a very dynamic budget, so isn't every budget, right? Every budget is dynamic, even my own house budget. Um, and I looked at other towns, superintendent presents the budget in its entirety. If, if the members have changes they want to make, they may comment about it, but they don't keep changing the numbers from the district level, meaning the superintendent. That can come after, um, but at some point, you as the body need a full budget and a date, exact date, and a timeline when this presentation is going to end, so that you guys have at least four weeks, five weeks perhaps, to process your budget and you do your due diligence, because it's a large budget, yet you guys are usually given less time than we are from the town council side, and you guys are dealing with a larger percent. So I'm just concerned with that, I just feel like it's a little all over the place. The presentation, the Board of definitely shifts in departments by department, it's all over, finish an area, complete, right? Like, we're, we talk about education, like, it's incoherent here. Start in a section, complete it in the presentation, move to the next level of the presentation, complete it. You guys take your notes, your comments, you can just have deliberation, as Mr. Schulman said here. Write all that down, deliberate, right, hear each other's comments. And then she can write, you know, superintendent can write their notes and decide if they want to make changes before presenting it finally. But I just feel like I'm a little, I'm lost already, I don't know how you guys, half the time you guys don't have the sheets, you're getting them at four o'clock. Can't operate like this, we're talking about taxpayer dollars and money. Needs to be more concise, needs to be more efficient. First, to see their policy, vision stalled, the revision review stalled out. It seemed like it's ambiguous, all these assertions of attorney's opinions, yet none have been presented. So I guess, shall I, FOI, what's those attorney's opinions and why are we not moving forward, why are they still sitting? Um, P three one two O was proposed as, at ad hoc committee, it was a consensus to move forward, yet it's still sitting. I don't know, it seems like a stallout to me. Overwhelmingly, the people spoke about the inconsistencies in the budget for year after year, as a person who served on the RTM on the Education Committee seven years ago, these are my concerns. I remember sitting with Superintendent Austin Vice, she was with Dr. Gineer back then, and asked, where's this winter's budget with Jay? Oh, you're, you're right, let's look at the packet, we're going to review it, we're going to make it more in depth, still hasn't happened. This is not something new, this is something that's been asked. As a firm believer in funding education, I think it needs to be open and transparent, and the process in which you guys are doing it, I don't know how you're following it. This page, this packet, here, there, you, you can't operate like this. Um, so I just asked that, this ad hoc committee that concisely agreed to move forward with the new changes, what's the plan? When are you still going to have your budget, when are you going to start, when is the finish? Other districts do it very openly, and I just am concerned about this process. Again, as I spoke, I am concerned about closing achievement gaps, show me where in this budget, I haven't heard anybody ask this yet. Where in this budget are you showing where you're closing achievement gaps, where's that funding? Where's those math scores that we are failing on? Where in this budget are you guys allocating that money to close those achievement gap, can you show me the page number on that, please? Ask those questions, where are those questions? Where is the full-time career councillor that has a bo- a population larger than Stonington, and yet we don't have a designated career councillor? We have a part-time career councillor, what we call ourselves career and college readiness and IB this, and college prep courses, not general, just college prep courses, yet we're not prepping them because we don't have the proper staffing. We have to put our money in our mouth where we say we're, we're going. Back to your whole thing, which is very obvious, teaching and learning, let's get back to that. Um, we should be looking at this budget, not just looking at what we're funding here, how are we closing those achievement gaps to make sure our students are going to meet the, the next level math that we're not meeting? English, writing, reading, where are those things being met in this budget? I don't see it, I haven't been brought up, we were talking about pencils and pens and, uh, school supplies, and I'm very concerned. When you start cutting and saying to tell the principals to hold their site budgets, that's affecting teaching and learning. Um, so that's a concern, so it's, um, already to me off to a rocky start. Um, I'm hoping that there's going to be some changes, but, um, I, I definitely have major concerns at the start of this, and, uh, I had another friend look at this in a different district and she was blown away, she's like, this is how they do their budget? Uh, she's on Board of Ed, been on it for twenty years, so I'm not the only one. Also, I just also wanted to voice a concern where a friend of mine reached out, um, Mr. Goodrich, perhaps, um, and he was looking, he was very inspired by the RTC program. He agreed to donate three thousand of his own money to support the program in, in the name of his uncle who passed, who was a military personnel. And he also wanted to start a private scholarship in his name. And it seems as if like now they were told, oh, the Board of Ed has to handle this, and, oh, he can't pick the person in the scholarship when they write it, and it has to be all handled in-house unless he opens it up publicly outside. His goal was trying to keep it with Fitch students, right, graduates and people continuing? I don't know, maybe, maybe someone on the board can ask the questions, what is the process, I thought. You know, I saw one person present on behalf of his wife with breast cancer, and he picked, I thought he picks the, the precipian, right? I, I don't know, so I'm just confused on that, so that's another concern. Again, I know you guys have a hard job and I thank you for all you do, maybe I'll run for Board of Education, maybe that, that was my heart, uh, a while ago, when I was on the RTM is, uh, on the Education Committee, and then I saw the need to get on the council, but maybe, maybe in the next election in November, I'll consider running on here, because this is really where my passion is, um, and I think it needs some help, thank you.
Okay. Next is student representative report, Melanie.
So my first item is, um, our debate team has been having a great season so far with a lot of high scores within the past few meets. Um, and they'll be having their second home tournament this weekend on Saturday. So that'll be a great opportunity for them to continue succeeding. Um, the spring theater production was just changed to Grease. It was previously another play, but there was a conflict with the copyright. Because there was another production doing it around here, so they had to change it, so now it's going to be Grease. Um, also, the National Honor Society has been getting an influx in tutoring requests, and, um, we've been able to fulfill all of them so far, so, um, everybody's getting the help that they need. And also Falcon Academy has been, there's been lots of people coming in and there's been lots of opportunities for them to get a lot of support, so that's been going great. Um, I know, um, one of the agenda items is the cell phone policy. I think I've touched on this before, but, um, I've heard a mixed review on the cell phone policy. Um, I've personally seen a really good impact of, um, students being more engaged in class because the phones are away. Um, but I have also heard some people saying that, um, you know, teachers are enforcing it, like, they're supposed to, but sometimes they'll have like a text from their boss or something like that, and they, um, haven't found the right way how to like respond to it, because they're not supposed to have it in class, so that's the only kind of critique I have on it, so overall, I think it's been pretty positive so far.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yes.
Uh, I'm delighted to hear that you're having an influx of tutor requests, uh, and that Falcon Academy is having more people come.
Yes.
That you're able to meet them, could you give us a little more color on the numbers and the range of types of tutoring requests that you're getting, are they all concentrated in one area? Different subject matter areas?
Um, we usually get, um, it varies week to week, but I've been seeing, it's usually about two or three per week. So we'll get a message from, uh, the councillors and a request, uh, member who's good in those areas to support that. Um, and subject wise, it's usually the AP and honors subjects. Um, we've gotten a few for AP statistics. And then I think we might have gotten a couple in like honor science areas. So that's what I've been seeing for tutoring mostly. Um, in Falcon Academy, we get a lot of, uh, history requests. Just figuring out how the best way to take notes would be, and just kind of general, just how can I improve my grade? Um, we get a lot of the athletes so that they can stay on the team, um, because they have to keep their grades up, so um, it's usually a variety in Falcon Academy, but yeah, for tutoring, it's mostly, um, math and science related.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for Melanie?
Uh, just a preliminary inquiry, um, we did skip over the response to comments from citizens.
Oh, yeah.
Get them on the agenda.
I'll get back to it. Any other comments for Melanie?
I just want to say thank you for, uh, sharing all those thoughts, and, um, definitely appreciate the notes on, uh, the critiques on policy and the recommendations for tutors. Appreciate it.
Okay. No other comments or questions, man? Okay, thank you, Melanie, appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Do you want to go back to, uh, give Ian a chance to comment on the?
I didn't get there yet.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna say it right now, response to comments from citizens. Any responses from comment, on the comments from citizens?
I just want to say I appreciate, uh, Portia coming out and sharing her thoughts, and I share a number of those concerns. And, uh, look forward to working with this board to, uh, resolve those concerns in a timely manner.
Any other comments?
Yep, um, I also appreciate you coming out and speaking, and I would check other, um, residents to come out and speak, because we love to hear from you, so, thank you.
Anything else? Yeah, moving right along, I'm going to ask if we can put the staff portion of the agenda before we do, um, superintendent administration. So we're gonna move up, um, discussion on Charles Bonner Magnet School grade four and five field trip, and the robotics team, and the high schools music department, and all the curriculum, we'll move that up before the superintendent gives her report and administration, thank you, okay?
Excuse me, Deb.
Yes?
Really should have a motion to change the order of the agenda.
I make a motion.
Uh, we move to, uh, change the order of our agenda, adding nothing new, but just changing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Thomas.
Okay. Uh, Matt made the motion, Joan and Ian second it, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, okay. What about online, Jay and Andrea?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine zero zero, thank you very much, okay, Susan.
All right, so I do believe that Mr. Danner is on to talk a little bit about the field trip with his, um, group that goes to, um, that does hiking, they actually hike, or they do team breeders every Friday with him and some staff, and I think he would like to be able to tell you a little bit about it and the trip coming up.
Personally, I'd like a motion so we can discuss it. And, uh, I can read the motion myself to approve Charles Bonner Magnet School's fourth and fifth grade field trip request to Nickerson Park Family Campground in Chaplain, Connecticut, scheduled for May twenty second, twenty twenty five, through May twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Dean? Okay. Okay, Seth, go ahead.
All right, so I, I submitted the paperwork for this, um, I don't, uh, I, I guess I'm kind of here to answer any questions that anybody has, but um, we changed the way we did things this year, um, we weren't, we weren't very successful last year, um, and we're kind of short on cash, so we, we rechanged, or not rechanged, but changed all the, not all, I guess, but some of the stuff that we do, I guess, if that makes sense. I've been doing the same thing for about fifteen or sixteen years, so we modified everything to, I guess that's a good word, to just stay within Connecticut. So the last trip, I didn't realize it, but the last trip, um, I thought we were okay because it was in, it was in the state. But I think because we're missing two days of school, I put in for a Thursday and a Friday, um, and Saturday, um, I had to come tonight, so that last trip is a trip to Nickerson Park, my family camps there, um, it's on a river, it has access to a state park, a state forest, um, with tons of acres in it, um, there's some history there, the first general in the uh, Civil War was born right across the river, um, and his birthplace is still right there, well, his, his, the fireplace and some of the houses, still there, the, the rocks of it, um, and he was killed, I, I think in Missouri, and was sent back home, and his, uh, grave site is up the road away, so we have a little bit of history to look at while we're there as well, too, some interesting facts from just here from within our, within our own state, so. We've got that, um, we've got a river there to play in, um, there's some swimming, there's plenty of hiking, uh, we've got plans to cook, I just had them camp, um, I think a couple of weekends ago, uh, we were cooking breakfast in the kitchen, uh, so they're learning to use cast iron and doing some different things, so that's, um, kind of a quick overview of the stuff, I've been doing it for quite some time, so always modifying. I will say a shout out to the police department, not that anybody's in that room tonight, but I can still do it. Um, they showed up, uh, when we camped in the school at nine o'clock, um, at night, couldn't get in the front door because it was locked, came around to the back door and two boys saw them. They came and got me and said, the police are out back, and I said, well, do they want in? And they said, I don't know, we came and got you, didn't let them in the building. So even though police were standing outside, um, they didn't let them in the building, they came in and they hung out, played games, um, and did things for about forty-five minutes with the kids that night, which was really nice to have, so shout out, shout out to the police department. And then I think I'm here for questions, unless I froze, which could have been.
I have a quick question, real quick.
Sure.
On the back of the application, it says, uh, twenty-five minimum persons is twenty-five, and it's thirty-five dollars per person, but I see that you're charging fifty dollars. So can you explain what you're going to do with the additional fifteen? Or is that a mistake on the back of this paper?
Uh, I don't think it's a mistake, we've adjusted what we do each year based off our budget. So, um, we're getting sweatshirts coming up pretty soon, and our fundraising has, um, not been as successful as it has been in the past, some other things we've done, so we, we will clearly, um, let the parents know exactly what they're paying for. We set up to twenty-five students, the campground, I think, is eight seventy-five, four twenty-five, so we have to pay that regardless. Um, but we're only going to charge the parents that want their children to go for their portion of that, we'll use fundraising to supplement the rest, and then the other part will be for sweatshirts and food and things like that. Is that, does that help answer?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. I, I would say, in, in general speaking, a three-day trip for fifty dollars, let's just say a hundred dollars, I've talked to quite a few parents, three days for a hundred dollars is a pretty good deal.
Jen, you have a question?
I do, um.
You might.
I do, um, Mr. Danner, um, just a quick question, uh, I noticed there's only three chaperones, is, so that's roughly like eight students per adult? Do you feel that's adequate, considering they're like fourth and fifth graders?
Yeah, I've done the same thing for fifteen, sixteen years, we, I just know what happens, I submitted for twenty-five students, we will not take twenty-five. We had nineteen at our last one, so I, I don't think I have taken over twenty students in all the years I've done it, maybe one time? That might be it, maybe twice, I, I don't think it's been more than that, so I know that the number will be under twenty, uh, and based off the last camping one, I'm, I'm pretty certain it will be that way, because even though they're part of the club and I need to be upfront about how many we have in the group, um, not all will go, not all are comfortable doing it. We also have another camping trip in, um, the spring that we'll go to a campground, and that's another trial run before we do this one, so yeah, I'm pretty confident.
Perfect, and then part two is, I know fifty dollars is relatively, um, steep for some families, um, and I know you said fundraising hasn't been as good, um, what other opportunities for disadvantaged families is there to participate? To be able to participate?
Um, I've always been able to manage to get someone to donate, so, uh, we have, we have parents that offer every year. Last year I had multiple parents that said, I'll pay double if someone can't do it. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we make it, it always works out, so in everything that I send, um, hats for kids, sweatshirts for kids, um, camping fees, um, I ask for donations, if we're cooking, like, send in eggs, or send in English muffins, or whatever it is that we're doing, chicken, we fried chicken last year and made fried Oreos, we, we did a bunch of different things. So I ask for supplies and donations, and that covers everybody, um, but everything that we send that requires money, we always put the asterisks there that says, if you cannot afford this, or this is a burden on your family, email one of the two of us, the two people that are in charge, and we will make sure that it's covered. With money, and we say it right up front, money should not be a concern for anybody, it should not withhold anybody from participating.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Appreciate all your efforts on this, sounds like a great trip and glad the tradition is continuing. I'm just curious to know, like, how do you, um, handle the swimming situation? Uh, students who are interested in going but maybe do not know how to swim?
That's actually a really good question, um, where we're going, the majority of it is like maybe knee-high, not even. So, um, I have not taken kids, but there was one place that we've gone in all the years where we let them swim, and I asked that question right up front. Like, can you swim, and I'm, we're always right there, nobody is ever unattended in anything that we're doing. So, like, um, somebody had said earlier, they're fourth and fifth graders, it's got to be watched pretty closely, so, um, we, we have a pretty close eye on what's going on.
Very well, thank you.
Any other questions for Seth? But Seth, thank you very much for your neat application, it was very easy to read.
Well, I did it wrong the first time, just for the record, though, I had to do it a second time.
I appreciate that. Okay, Matt, you have anything? Yep, take the vote. Okay, all those in favor of approving the Charles Bonner Magnet Schools' fourth and fifth grade field trip request to Nickerson Park Family Campground in Chaplain, Connecticut, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, abstentions? Andrea, did you follow?
I did. I even, I even put my picture up.
Okay, all right, so approve that, that's a nine to zero, to zero, next item is
Thank you, Seth.
Yeah, thank you, Seth.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Have a good time on your trip.
Oh, I will.
Uh, the next item is discussion and possible action regarding approval of the robotics team field trip request to Eastern State's exposition in West Springfield, Massachusetts, scheduled for April third, twenty twenty-five, through April fifth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I could read the motion to approve the robot- robotics teams' field trip request to Eastern State's exposition in West Springfield, Massachusetts, scheduled for April third, twenty twenty-five, through April fifth, twenty twenty-five, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike, okay. Anybody online?
Do you have, um, Sherry Facus or anyone online, you'd see Clint, this is their usual field trip that they take each year.
They actually have practice tonight.
Uh, they might be really getting ready for it, so.
Ah, okay.
She's not online.
Okay.
Well, everybody read their application, any questions or comments about it?
Um, I would just say that I'm familiar with the robotics teams', um, operations, um, and I think, uh, it's a great thing to do, and I'm supportive of it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, we should make note, uh, because we do list fundraisers, we should, for whatever's worth, highlight here, the fundraisers encourage people to go and do their part.
And you could talk about it.
Okay, so they've, they've noted here, they're going to hold fundraisers, I don't know when, at Chipotle, Monson's Chocolate, and Panera Bread. Again, don't have the dates, I expect those will be publicized, but for anybody listening, anybody who's going to be listening, be aware.
Any other questions?
I have one, just, um, it, um, as far as, um, families that may not be able to afford it, is it, is it, um, basically common throughout the district that we offer? I mean, Seth's answer was great, um, the way the district ran over it, so is that, that would include things like this as well?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
An- anything else? Go ahead, Dean.
I think in this case, this is for members of the robotics team, so we already know what that population is and who does and who does not need that sort of help, so it may be that none of the new members that happen, I think. I mean, I hope the adults would handle that, unlike the camping trip where I expected sort of, you know, anyone can sign up for it, so this is a much more known group.
Yeah.
So hopefully, you know, they'll figure it out.
And the transportation, the parents are dropping them off and picking them up? And the same thing with Seth's, I think, okay, so no transportation.
No transportation.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the robotics teams' field trip requests, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Jay. Opposed, abstentions? That pass is nine to zero. Next item is discussion and possible action regarding approval of Fitch High School's music department's field trip to Orlando, Florida, scheduled for April ninth, twenty twenty-six, through April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. And the motion reads to approve Fitch High School's music department's field trip request to Orlando, Florida, scheduled for April ninth, twenty twenty-six, through April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. to Orlando, Florida, scheduled for April ninth, twenty twenty-six through April twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second item. All right, discussion.
Do we have any teachers on board or administrators on board? I think I saw Amy McKenna. I don't know if she can speak to the music department. I know they've taken this trip before. I don't remember recently, though, that they've had this trip. I think it's one of those every few years.
Believe it or not, COVID.
Yeah, maybe.
Curious, are they going to Disney World or someplace else in Orlando?
I, I don't know if Disney might be part of their gig, like singing there, but we can find out. I don't know if that's the right.
Did say something about Disney. Yeah, it's.
Amy is online, but not any of the teachers that I recognize.
So I don't know, Amy McKenna, do you know anything about um, the music trip other than that?
Yeah.
It's kind of a, one that they've taken before in the past. I think it's a competition.
It's on page two.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I, I don't have the specifics of that trip um, in front of me right now. Um, I know that the, the teachers of the music department could probably do a much better job of answering the questions that I could for you in this moment.
I just offered it. On the second page in the description, it does say, the first sentence, um, is a proposal to Disney World staying on site. And then there's a numerous number of mentions of Disney, so I believe that it will be the central focus of the trip.
I saw that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see that it's, Disney has enjoyed the rides. It's the, they're references to Disney. Yeah, hotel, Disney, shop, information schedules, so.
It says students, it says reason for trips. Students will perform at a festival and attend masterclass workshops.
My guess is it's linked with Disney's facilities.
Next time, can we please have somebody from the music department here to explain that this with the. Jen, and then Mike.
Do we, do we know why the student cost is more than the teacher's cost?
I don't have a clue.
Do we need to vote on this tonight or can it wait till next?
I see Beth Borler's hand is raised. I don't know if she has information.
Hi, um, as a parent of a cast member at Disney and of children that have gone to there for these festivals, uh, what they do is they work with Disney's conductors and musicians and other maestros that are brought in and they conduct workshops. And they also sing in a festival atmosphere and they have very busy days within their programming and for their learning and their competitions. And then they might get some time in the parks also, but it's a very um, prestigious uh, invitation. It's usually rotated through every few years, so it's not they're just going to Disney, they're going there to perform their craft. So I just wanted to plug, uh, give that plug in there and uh, to know that it is quite an honor to actually to go to the uh, the workshops.
Thank you, Beth. Jen, you all done?
I still don't have a response as to why teachers' cost is lower than the students.
Michael?
I'm surprised they charged the teachers at all.
Yeah. I would say what I saw.
So what I was gonna ask about is, so the site's in Florida and I'm constantly hearing things in news about some law passed or some initiative passed that's against LGBTQ plus. Um, what protect, do we need an extra layer protections for students while we're there? Um, it's a, I think a lot of uh, uh, students might feel nervous about going.
Because they're made to feel nervous, pardon me.
By Florida.
By Florida, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Do you feel comfortable voting on this fail trip without, um, where Jen doesn't have an answer to her question? But do you all feel comfortable voting? Doesn't matter to me, but.
Um, I would just offer as a response, you know, I believe it, it's a matter of just like, it is, I mean, the teachers are going to be chaperones. So there is like, you know, they're gonna be on the clock, so to speak, and you know, having, you know, done something similar to that in my life.
Ninety-plus kids, yeah.
Work. Twenty-four.
Five hundred dollars, yeah, that's like a discount.
With all the other kids that are there.
They're earning their discount.
I know that we were just very concerned about it when um, the trip to, was it Spain, came last fall. So it was just, um, I was just bringing it up, but I'm okay. I totally understand like the prestige of Disney. My husband was um, in the band when he was younger and this is very um, a good opportunity for Fitch to showcase the talent of our students, so definitely in support of it.
They probably might answer your question, those chaperones are there for a reason, they know the kids and so hopefully, you know, that would make them feel more comfortable if there was ever a situation that made them uncomfortable.
Yeah, I just suggest they uh, can talk about it before, before they're going. I know for years, um, um, as a state employee, we're, we weren't allowed to travel on state business to certain states because of their um, um, positions and laws. Uh, Mississippi was one of them, I remember that well, but um, that, I don't think that's the case here with Florida and this is not state business, but it's something, it's just something to consider.
Dean?
Yeah, uh, this to me resembles the London trip of the marching band some years ago. Uh, where the kids spent most of their time, but they're not weren't performing, they're practicing. It was basically a work trip for them. Less of a work trip for the adults. If they had spare time, there was some sightseeing. That's kind of what this resembles to me.
And it's quite an honor.
At this thing.
Yeah, to go, yeah.
You'll say, Dean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, also just reading the details here, um, first line says, three, four, three nights, four days, Disney, Disney World only. I believe if I'm reading between the lines correctly, I think it's pretty much gonna be focused completely on site of Disney World within the parameters of Disney World, which my understanding of the situation down there, that Disney World is kind of uh, cording itself off like the Vatican is always, as far as like establishing its own rule and culture within its borders.
From a clan outside.
I think we have a music teacher online, Sandra Hall. Hi, Sandra. We tried to get you on.
There you go, I had to unmute, so sorry.
Do you, do you have anything you wanna tell us about this trip?
Well, I'm excited. The kids are excited. Um, we, uh, the only thing we're looking at right now is trying to figure out if it's manageable for these students to go next year. Or if we should hold off till the year after. Um, I want to make sure that we can keep providing these travel and performance opportunities for our students, but it needs to be sustainable where they're not fundraising every five minutes, you know? Um, so I, I can tell you that Andrea, the band director and I are looking at that, just to see if we have a, a good amount of um, um, fundraisers lined up that would actually help them raise the money. When we went to Hawaii, I spent a lot of time finding extra donors. Um, so that's, that's part of it too, but we're, we're excited. I, I don't know much about the program. Um, I believe my cohorts at Ledger are doing something very similar this year. Um, so I'm excited to talk to them to see how it goes.
If this is by invitation for twenty twenty-six, will you get invited in twenty twenty-seven if you postpone it?
Um, we could, we could. It, it happens every year. Um, and I'm assuming because we'll, we'll have the same talent, if not more or better, um, continually growing in our music department. Um, I, I don't see why there'd be a reason why we couldn't attend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions for Sandra?
Do you request, uh, if you go this year, I hope? Um, perhaps somebody with your entourage can take some video that we can put up for the rest of the community to see.
Always. We um, we were so honored when we went to Hawaii to have uh, Mr. Russell with us. He's just fan, he's just amazing. He is amazing. Um, and so, you know, don't, don't think we won't be calling him and saying, hey, you wanna go to Disney? He can be my travel buddy. So we'll, you'll definitely have those coming back to the board.
Do you have an idea what kind of fundraising you're going to do?
Um, we have one fundraiser that was very successful for those that, that actually did it. We did a calendar fundraiser. And that's all on the students. They're given a calendar. Um, and the, the premise is that every day on the calendar, they need to try and sell. So if they sell the second, then whoever they sell it to will give them two dollars. They sell the thirtieth, they give them thirty dollars and so on. Um, and that, by the end, you can get a really nice chunk um, of your payment for the trip. So I, I'm sure that we'll do that again. Um, car washes are always really great moneymakers during the summer, believe it or not. So we'd probably schedule some of those. Um, and we're very, very fortunate to have our boosters, our music boosters, because they will also um, give a certain amount of money towards the trip or sponsor someone. Um, just depends on how much we actually fundraise, um, we'll know how much they will be able to give towards the cause.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions for Sandy? Okay, all those in favor of approving Fitch High School's music department's fail trip request to Orlando, Florida from April ninth to April twelfth, twenty twenty-six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jay? Opposed? Abstentions? Approved, nine, zero, zero.
Thank you, guys. Let me know if you wanna come along. I'll teach you the music.
Let us know about the fundraising.
I will, absolutely. And hey, while I have you here, next Thursday, the sixth, um, is our Come Together concert, our Black History Month concert um, at the high school. So I, I hope to see some of you there.
Do you have a flyer? Have you put it on, on Facebook yet?
I have. I will, I will send it to you right now.
And we'll get it, we'll get it out there too, for you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Good, good. Good to see you guys. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, Sandy, too.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Um, the next item, little one.
They're twins.
The next item on the agenda is discussion, oh, no, yeah, discussion and possible action regarding the approval of ed rising to curriculum. And um, I'll turn it over to Adrian.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the ed rising to curriculum.
I'll second.
Second, okay. You wanna talk about it, Adrian?
Um, yes, we, we've talked about this a couple of times in curriculum. Um, it is a follow-up to the ed rising course that we are offering now. So um, I believe they're gonna try to, right now, ed rising is um, a UConn class offered to juniors and seniors. Um, they're trying to expand um, the offering, so I don't know if, there's another one um, that has to do with special ed, I believe. I don't know if that one's on the agenda tonight, um, that's coming, but we're trying to um, add some educational offerings to help support students that might be interested in becoming a teacher when they, when they graduate. Is there anyone here online to talk about the course specifically?
Um, I'm here. Um, so yeah, ed rising year two is just a, it's an extension off of the year one curriculum. Um, so it goes more in-depth with like reflective and responsive teaching practices. Uh, like as I had outlined in the um, curriculum document, so some of it is like stuff that we touch on this year, but this one goes way more in-depth. So kids that like, maybe took the course, not sure if they were interested in education and are definitely interested in it, then they can do a deep dive um, into that and then it'll be like a more, you'll, they'll close, work more closely with um, a subject area of their choice or a specific teacher. Like this year, my students are at the elementary and middle school doing observations and some fieldwork. And a lot of them have actually been able to narrow down like specifics on like what they're interested in, what they're not interested in. So if they were to take the course again next year, they could like, instead of going to both locations, they could just go to the one and they could work more closely. And they'll like develop their portfolio, do um, a lot more lessons within the classroom and like help the teacher. Teach this year, we only do, like their, my students are getting ready to um, teach their lesson at either the elementary or middle school before I leave for maternity leave. So they're doing it a little earlier than I would have um, planned, but next year, the hope would be that they would do, you know, more than just one lesson with their teacher. And then, yeah, we are expanding the education career pathways, so um, Stacy Narica is going to be teaching a introduction to special education topics class. So students that um, are also like, maybe have taken my class, can also take that class as well, or they could take that before.
Want anything, Susan, Amber?
Well, we know that every freshman gets to pick their pathway and this is yet another pathway. And we know that growing our own, whether it's staff that we have in-house that we can encourage to become teachers or whether it's our own students to encourage, I think it's a really wonderful pathway to choose. I can say that after forty-five years of it. So thank you, Laurel, for all the work that you've done, inspiring your students to wanna follow your path.
It's been so much fun. I'm glad that I've had the opportunity to do this.
Any questions or comments?
I just make a comment from the uh, committee. It was apparent that this, within a couple of years, would probably fill to capacity, the, the demand is there for the course.
Do we have a teacher already in place for this course or do we need to hire a teacher?
Well, Laurel is the teacher for the part one and potentially for part two, doing the deeper dive.
Yeah, I would be. I, I'm more than happy to do the, the year two. Um, I spent some time, you know, doing the curriculum and I attend monthly um, ed educators rising meetings through the state and meet with other um, educators and districts that have this, this course at their school as well. And in the process of reaching out um, about seeing which school districts have the year two, because we might be like one of the first few to have it, um, which will be cool. But a lot of, a lot of school districts are just starting off with the club and we've been really grateful to have the class and um, get that going, so there's more opportunity for our students.
How many students you have in your class now?
I have twenty students. Last year I only had seven, so it's quite a bit. Um, you know, and I'm anticipating another full class next year and we're opening it up to uh, sophomores as well. And then um, you know, getting like the information down even to um, Russian if they wanted to, to take a course. Um, so then they could, like, since our career pathway has, is um, growing so much with like education and whatnot, um, having them start earlier will be beneficial for them so that they can take some of these uh, courses.
Do you know how many of your twenty students now are interested in this course?
So out of the twenty students that I have now, seven of them are juniors. So they're all eligible to take the class and are interested. And then I also have one student that took the class last year. That'll be a senior next year, so she could also take it. So it would start pretty small, um, but then the hope is to like, now that people know that there's a second year, they could take it earlier and then um, get into, get, get into it. Hopefully be bigger next year.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, I've got one. Yeah, yeah, I've got one, well, a little bit. Um, so Ed Rising One is a UConn class. Um, is there, what level will this class be offered at for now? Or do we have that um, worked out yet?
Um, so, right now, like in talking with admin, we had just developed it as an honors level course. The UConn course is the um, one, I guess that's in higher demand, the Ed Rising Year One course. Um, we were in the process of looking into if there is like an ECE offering for like a second year education course, but we're not sure that there is. So we might have to um, like if we wanted to offer it as college credit, we might have to look at some other like um, colleges that like offer, you know, different like education courses. Like we have some affiliations with Eastern and stuff like that. But um, I know that with the ECE program, the one course that UConn offers is that if you love it, teach it. And our Ed Rising Year One is paired with that. So that's kind of where I'm at in that process.
Well, thank you. I, I really appreciate all the work you've done on this.
Thank you.
I've thought of many ways of saying this. Spare you most of my privilege. Most of you will not be shocked. I'll be going to guess this. The document is loaded to me, loaded with the favorite buzzwords and phrases in weeks of a political agenda. Not all of it. I'm very pleased that we're offering a course like this. I just cannot support the structure. I could go on at length. But I don't believe that I have an audience for this. I don't think I have the voice for this tonight. But I wanted to register my no vote for the reason, for my no votes, some summary for the reason for my no vote. None of what I was going to say anyway would be a secret to anybody in this room.
That's it?
That's it. Isn't that enough?
Amber.
Thank you. Um, I have worked uh, with programs like this in my previous district and know of some universities that do offer college level credit. So I can um, I'm sure I can get with the uh, folks at the high school and um, help them to hopefully get college level, level credit um, with some local universities.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, ready for a vote? All those in favor of approving Ed Rising Two curriculum, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, deen? Abstentions, none? So it passes eight to one to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laurel.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Uh, the next item is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the event and sports photography curriculum. And the motion reads to approve the event and sports photography curriculum. Do I have a second? Okay. Who's online for this one?
Bev, Christina's here. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good, thank you.
Are you, are you, do you want to speak about this um, photography and events curriculum?
Uh, sure. If anybody has any questions, uh, just to give you a quick overview. Uh, it's been sort of in the works. The kids are really excited about being able to take their skills that they're learning in this class and using them in the other parts of the school, whether it's sports, or it's drama, or music, or events within the community. Some of them have worked closely with Mark Russell over the years. So this just sort of extends the classroom uh, beyond, you know, what they've been learning and applying it to something they can use as a career. And it has recently fit very nicely in the marketing career pathways as well. Uh, because it would give them the opportunity to do their work, show their work and how to market their work. So it would be in addition to that pathway as well.
Are we supplying the equipment, or do they have to bring their own cameras and so forth and so on?
So at this point, I have all of the stuff. Uh, so I have plenty of cameras and things over time, looking for grants to maybe buy some telephoto lenses and things like that. But uh, I do have everything that would help get the kids up and off the ground.
That's great. That's great. Matthew?
Good evening. Thank you for the program. Uh, what are the prerequisites for this course?
So they would have to take photo one and two. So they would get to understand how to compose pictures, how to use the cameras, understand the basics of Photoshop. And then in photo two, they would work with the cameras completely on manual, understand it in different settings and uh, be comfortable with how that works and start to begin to apply this to projects of choice. And so after they've sort of completed these two, I think that they're ready to be working and photographing and being out there because they're going to be more comfortable. And in class, you know, if we're working and we go and, you know, photograph an event that's happening during the school day, they're not nervous that they would be able to take these pictures, come back, ask questions, you know, I can work alongside with them. And as they get more comfortable, they can begin to work at events after school hours.
Thank you. I would like to offer an idea, I'm not sure it'll be an amendment or not, that there be the prerequisites as you have, or the permission of the instructor. And the reason I add this possibility is, A, we have a transient population. We may have somebody come into the district who does not have the academic credits, but who may have the skills. And/or we may have someone who is a, I hate the term, an underachiever, somebody who didn't have the self-confidence, who wasn't motivated in the past, but would be really interested in doing this. And to give you the authority, or, or the, whoever the instructor is in a given year, the authority to assess the student so that we have it as, you know, we're not starting with somebody with has, who has no experience and, and no skill set. But uh, let, let's open it up to those who may have it, but just haven't been filled with joy at the possibilities. And you're going to give them this chance. Does that need to be an amendment?
I don't think so. We're, we're just, we're just approving the curriculum.
Well, I am suggesting that if the, I asked what the prerequisites were, and this curriculum seems to have some prerequisites which would not allow that to happen. If, if you must take the photo one or two, and you don't have them, then we would either need an agreement uh, informally or formally to make that a possibility. Again, the key is uh, permission of the instructor. So the, the gatekeeper is the one who knows what's required to assure that you have a student who will fit in and be ready to go from day one along with others. He or she may have a strength or a weakness that the others don't have, but by and large, we've opened the door to everybody who's qualified.
Do you have a response to that?
Um, so with our transient population, we deal with kids coming and going and um, how, you know, what experience they may or may not have at other schools. So we have had the opportunity to work with kids, although it can be challenging because their skill set is different. So there is a little bit of a difference uh, in what's been happening. But we've been able to accept kids and get them going and encourage them to continue. Even if they've changed schools and they didn't necessarily start out with what was suggested through Groton Public Schools.
And if we have a youngster, if we have a youngster.
Wait, wait one second, Andrea.
Okay, yes.
And if we had a youngster who did not take the courses, but was motivated somewhere along the line and had had a private mentor and now had the skills, would he or she be able to come to you and get admitted to the program as it's structured?
Uh, it would go through admin and they'd have to have a portfolio and, you know, references and background, that sort of thing to say, like they're capable of doing this.
As long as the path is open, that's fine. Thank you.
Andrea?
Uh, Beverly, I think that um, Susan would, would cooperate what I'm going to say. But that's, the military compact would speak to somebody who comes into the um, to our district and doesn't have the qualifications. But the military compact would address that. And I think Susan would back that up. I don't know about the others, um, question that Matthew has. It's a valid one.
Well, that would help the military students, but not students coming from other districts.
That's correct. But it sounds to me that there would be a process by which if there was a student who asked for that course and had a portfolio or had that kind of level of training and, you know, could fit into the class, that that would, that we would be open for any child who expressed that desire and had the skills to do it.
I think the key would be to give the teachers and admin the opportunity to um, make an assessment. That's all we ask.
So Matthew, you had an amendment on the floor?
I was asking if it was necessary.
Okay.
If, if I'm assured that it's not necessary, there's no need to do it.
Go ahead. Do you have a question?
Oh, I was just gonna, a general comment, as, as my understanding that there is sort of a procedure for that, for students coming in to be able to kind of bypass prerequisites if they're able to demonstrate a certain level of mastery or progression. But I, I did see any kind of.
I see it. I don't, I see it.
Um, and I saw, imagine like the principals would have something on the ground. They'd probably handle this.
Thank you very much.
Jay, you have a question?
I just want to um, thank Christina um, Scala uh, for the, the years of uh, doing the uh, photography programs and you know, allowing students to explore their passion with that. And I think this is a, a great uh, progression for them to go to, you know, for those that have an interest to go into this. And um, a- also just a quick shout out for her work along with uh, Stacy Norico over the years with the Unified Sports. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Amy?
Hi, thank you so much. Um, just wanted to recognize that oftentimes, you know, it's, it's, it's great to be a new student in Groton Public Schools and our school counseling department often does have to field um, you know, questions of what students are qualified for. So this is something that is already and would be in the future with new classes taken on a case-by-case basis. And certainly if a student, you know, demonstrated the kind of skills needed to enter this class, then we would, we'd be more than happy to, you know, to, to make room for them. So you know, this is something that already happens and would continue to be our practice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. Do you feel comfortable with it?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, any other comments, uh, questions?
Uh, just a general comment. Uh, thank you for the efforts on this and, and I looking through, I just, I love the practicality of it. And uh, you know, the, the um, skills and the techniques that are mentioned in here. And the approach is still sensible and practical. Well, thank you for the work you've done on this and the virtual committee as well.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor of approving um, the event and sports photography curriculum, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, carries nine zero zero. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You as well. The next item is uh, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the unified music curriculum. And the motion needs to approve the unified music curriculum. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Right, second. Okay, anybody online?
Yes, I think I see Stacy Norico and Sandra Hall.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, Sandy, you're still here? Okay.
I actually helped write the curriculum, just so I'd be able to help answer any music um, unify, or just in general unified questions. I've been done the art for many years, so.
Okay. Do you want to talk about the curriculum?
Um, sure. I have been working with Karna, who's just speaking, um, who has been an awesome mentor and guide for me, um, because she's had years of, of teaching uh, unified art. So with it being my third year, I've been thinking about this since my first year, really. Um, at Fitch and was curious why we never had a unified music curriculum. It's a universal language. There's so many therapeutic aspects to it. Um, long and short, there's no reason for them not to have music. Um, and so I, I was really excited when uh, the opportunity came to work with Karna and get this on the table for next year. So our um, students, the unified students, the curriculum will run um, closely the first year, it, it would be most equivalent to probably one of my general music elementary classrooms for the curriculum, uh, just until I find out where everyone is, what, what level that they are at, what they're capable of. Um, and then go from there and, and grow the curriculum as, as we move through the year. Um, it will include movement and singing and playing instruments. And hopefully at some point, uh, we'll be able to get a performance aspect into that, whether it's performing just in front of the uh, typical peers that are in the, in the classroom with them, or um, recording and sending a video home to their, their guardians, their parents.
Any questions or comments? Do you want to add anything, Adrian?
Yeah, let's, um, just explain to us the um, aspect of how many students with needs, like in a typical classroom, how many students with needs and how many peers might be in there, just so everyone understands.
I can um, answer some of that. Um, it varies year to year. And as far as um, the amount of typical peers in my um, art class this past semester, it wasn't as many as we had hoped. Um, but we are expecting more typical peers as these courses, like the Intro to Special Education, happened the Ed Rising, a lot of those students, we're hoping um, will take on a unified arts class. Many of them are already doing um, unified PE. So we do get um, a little bit of a crossover. Um, and depending on who is being put in the class, it could be more of an adapted um, situation um, with those students who need a little more assistance. There is, you know, also the need for um, their paras in there. And, you know, the regular, um, the typical pairs have done a great job in meeting different expectations of all these students. Cause in the past, we've had like I said, more kids that have more disabilities um, physically, um, and then also just some that are a little delayed. I don't know if that answers.
I, I would, I would like to chime into that as well, Karna. Um, I can tell you that I have a really good base of students that uh, not only want to become educators in the Ed Rising program, but they want to become music educators. And I can tell you, when I went to school for my undergrad, man, could I have used a class like this. Um, to be a typical peer, a fly on the wall, whatever, just to have that experience. And so I think, um, I think if we're looking at this unified music, that we will have no problem having uh, peers in the class.
Typically, it would be nice to have kind of a 50/50, um, so everybody had a partner. Um, that would be an ideal situation. And we have had it close to that before in our, um, in past years. It just kind of depends.
All right. Well, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dean?
Wonderful idea. Once again, Dean, it's something you can support. Program put in service of a political program. People develop an understanding of the AI through the lens of using music for the purposes of doing something else that I can't support. So yeah, it's a typical goal for me at this point.
Ian?
Uh, I just want to um, commend you all for the work on this. And uh, and uh, I really am excited to hear the idea of uh, pairing this up with like the Ed Rising uh, program as well, or having that, that avenue open, that thought process out there. Um, so um, yeah, I mean, you never know what, uh, what aspects might catch a person's uh, attention and focus. And um, you know, to go discover a talent or a passion. And you know, to go discover a talent or a passion. Very delicate balance between passion and talent. Some famous quote out there, I can't very grasp right now, but it has something to do with talent is just passion focused with discipline and time. So I look forward to seeing this developed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian.
Any other comments or questions? Would you like to, you don't have to, but would you like to respond to Dean's concern about the students will develop and and understanding of diversity, equity and inclusion through the lens of music? How all that can happen?
I think, I I mean, in a nutshell, I think, you know, we're trying to get our kids to be kind to one another and understand that every human being is different. And if we can be more aware of that as just in general, a human being, then we're doing our job as educators. And I think this class really, I mean, I know, I understand the DEI is a hot button, but we're truly, we're rooting for our underdogs. And we want our kids to be successful. And I think these unified classes have helped tremendously. Like somebody, I think Ian had said earlier, Stacy and Christina had started our Unified Sports Program years ago. And I can't even tell you how humbling watching these kids work together is over these past years. It's, you know, the best buddies, the unified foods. It's just, it it comes down to, we're trying to go with our mission, our mission of Groton Public Schools, right, to send students, these adults out into the world and be good. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that response. Awesome. Okay, we're ready to vote. All right, all those in favor of approving the unified music curriculum, say aye. Abstentions. All right, so passes eight to one to zero. Dean is opposing. All right, thank you. All right, so to begin, then I will go back to the beginning of the agenda and we'll go with the superintendent and administration reports.
So we have a budget calendar that we are up to already the week of January twenty seventh. Tomorrow we'll be doing a review of town obligations and health insurance as well as finishing up some work with technology. Clint will continue with that. And so I just wanted to say that on the week of February third, we have a budget work session. And then the possibility of a public Board of Education special meeting on the budget. So if Beverly, did you want to say what we had found through the town office about? Give you that piece of paper.
Yeah, but I think we have it on the agenda.
Okay, it's it, we're going to be voting on it later. But we did find that the town charter obligates the town council to have a public hearing. And we've always joined in with that public hearing and usually get a pretty good crowd. They come out to talk about education, the library and lots of other things. But I don't think there's any wording in the charter that it's it's absolutely has to happen through the board, but it's something you can consider. And you'll be voting on it later.
Correct.
So that's really all I had to say about it.
Ports firm, staff, director of finance.
Yep, Director of Finance. So we'll put up his narrative. Ray, are you on there?
Yes, we are.
I know you've had a really busy couple of weeks here.
You didn't tell me it was going to be this busy.
Well, we were having you do a town review and it became so much more. You came to our rescue. Surprise, surprise.
Surprise. What, and I I do apologize for the brevity of this this report. I've been, you'll you'll see it on here that with the aid of one of our new people, we've helped pull to pull it together in the eleventh hour here. And I again, I do apologize for the brevity of it.
Did we get this report, Ray? I don't see it in my packet.
They were supposed to print it off and bring it to the meeting tonight. I did you?
I don't know. I didn't see it on my desk, but we'll make it right now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Kind of hot off the press from him today.
Because, well, I've I've been I've been working with the state on our year end report. Tomorrow I'll be finishing finishing the audited report and sending it off to the auditors. I was hoping to have it done for yesterday, but I was hoping to have it done for this morning. But we ran into some issues that the balancing didn't want to work. If you know anything about this state report, there's about probably a twelve or fifteen different segments that have to tie out. And if they don't tie out, you you can't submit it. So that's why.
It had been submitted, but the auditors asked us to open it up again, I believe, right?
Well, that was, well, long story short, it was submitted back on nine three. Now, having said that, on nine three, we did tie out, we were within, I have to be up on one of the file, on one of the reports. It's called the local expenditure file. We have to be tied out to within a dollar, plus or minus a dollar ninety nine. But that includes, when we do that tie out, that includes all expenses and potential expenses. So when I left, they were working on, working down the encumbrances, cleaning up expenses, possibly doing some budget adjustments, not budget adjustments, but expenditure adjustments to balance to the town. Well, the number I had in on the top now changed and I have to balance to that number. And we had some issues trying to balance to that number. Long story short, we haven't worked out. I just, I'm just filling in, dotting the i's and crossing some t's on a few other segments. There's some validation reports that have to be run. But I should have it submitted somewhere between ten and eleven tomorrow morning. So that that should be off our table. And then I can, I can actually jump in and help out with some of the budgeting and really dig into the weeds on anything that's going on. But.
Ray, can you make your sheet a little bigger?
Clint would have to make it larger. He was, he's displaying it. This is very similar to the file that Irene had presented. We just, we cleaned it up a little bit, then it's actually the short version of it.
All right, can you just give us like a a half minute to look at it before you start talking about it? Okay. You good with that? Okay, we'll recess for five minutes and we'll take a look at the sheet and then come back again.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Ray.
Yep.
Okay, Ray, you want to explain this?
Basically, this is very similar, if not the same, report that was being provided. I guess for the last three, four months, five months. This, it's it's different from what I provided because I, the other file had so many links in it. They they were breaking and it was not a was not a pretty file to try to maintain. Let's put it that way. So this is, it's it's, it looks to be. I I don't know what questions you have because it's pretty much self explanatory, I think.
I have a point of parliamentary privilege. The projected image is not visible to show the percent available clearly. Can we adjust it down to maybe like a one seventy five soon or? When I run two hundred percent, maybe we scale down to a hair.
Mike, you have questions?
Well, that that scaled it.
Oh, Andrew, I like that.
Can't take on to his.
Can you put that back on the screen?
I, that's, somebody behind the scenes has that to put up.
Thank you. All right, Mike.
Yeah, so Ray, could you explain the the first two columns, the differences between them? They come up to the same number, eighty seven million, nine hundred fifty eight thousand, four hundred eighty four dollars. That was the adopted budget for FY twenty five, but I'd say over half of the line items there are different between the two thousand twenty five budget and the two thousand twenty five budget book. I assume the second column is the adopted budget. I'm wondering why the first column is different.
Again, this is before my time. I'd have to do some backpedaling on this. When I get some extra time, I can, I'll do some digging. I I don't have an answer off the top of my head, to be honest with you. I I'm looking at it. I knew the question would come up as I was sitting here listening to everybody. I know the budget book. I don't know what was approved. I do know what was entered and what is put out there. So when I, again, when I came on board, I was, this is the budget and we uploaded it.
But the first column is what's what was entered into what system?
The only system we have, the E finance system.
And is that a town system or is it a?
No, no, that's the, that's our financial system.
And where did those numbers come from when when you entered them?
It came from the detail behind all of it that rolled up. So once they rolled up, they should have equaled what's in your budget book. They, obviously, they did not.
So Ray, one of the things we talked about today was to have a staff person work with you on looking at what was put into E finance versus the board book so that we could have more clarity on that because that question's come up before.
This is not a fast process because you're going back ten months now, twelve months. So I'm going to have to go back again. Three quarters of the staff in the business office is is new or relatively new. And it's going to take some time to dig this out. I'd rather fix it going forward to make sure that we don't, it doesn't happen again. I mean, that's my my take on it. But if you if you really want to know, it's going to take some time to dig it out. I can't wait. I I'm not going to promise how, what, when and where.
Now, now for me, following on that, just taking the salaries, for instance, the budget book has it at fifty three nine nine four four six two. And then that first column has it, was it a hundred and seventy four, a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars higher, I believe. That's a big difference. I was only, I started on the Board of Ed, I think maybe in May. And you, and this was entered, you say, in June?
June thirtieth or somewhere between July fourth and June thirty.
Okay, so I was on the board then, and I know while I was on the board, we never approved any differences from the budget.
No, but in in defense of what was entered, you have approved prior Board of Education financial statements.
Yeah, I don't think that's much.
These numbers have not changed since July third at the latest.
Okay, but but the the difference that I'm hung up on and which was real during a budget recent budget session is that these categories are quite different from each other. They add up to the same. They're definitely different among functions, which the board has to approve transfers basically between functions that can be made for emergency purposes. But then we have to then be informed and approve them after a fact. As for me, as a board member, seeing those differences was quite a a surprise. I I don't know if any other board members knew about it or remember voting on this, but I really fail to see how we have an adopted budget that was first voted on by the Board of Ed, then taken the town council, they reduced it, voted to reduce it. It was restored by the RTM and what's published on our website does not have this first column of numbers. It has the second column of numbers. It's really troubling to me. And it doesn't just seem like an accounting error. It's it's a reshuffling of funds.
Were you insinuating that we're doing something underhand? I'm going to be very blunt.
I'm not insinuating anything.
But then what are you trying to say?
I'm trying to, I'm saying exactly what I'm saying is that.
Which is?
Let me just say this. Okay, I'll read them off. Here are the categories we have. Salaries, they're different. Benefits, they're the same. Purchase services, they're different. Property services, they're same. Transportation, insurance, I don't know, it's communication, tuition. They're different. Supplies, they're different. Equipment, they're the same. Dues and fees, they're different. Grand total, they're the same. What you have.
Let me ask the question.
Are you speaking?
Budget transfers.
Ray, let him finish, please.
What you have in that first column is not what was approved by the town.
Are you asking me? Okay, are you asking me to do a budget transfer to balance to the budget book?
I'm asking someone to explain what happened. That's what I'm asking.
I'm telling you, it's going to take time to decide what happened. It was ten months ago. I don't know what happened. I was not here when the budget was developed. I was not here when when things went awry. I'm trying to fix things. By throwing insinuations, it does not fix things. I need to get to the root cause. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, all right.
I am not making an insinuation at all.
That's what it sounds like to me.
There are two columns of numbers. They're different. No one has explained why and the board didn't approve it. So that happened.
My question to you, do you want me to do a budget transfer to balance out to your budget book? Yes or no?
I want the superintendent or someone to tell us what's going on. What happened back then?
Nobody seems to know, Mike, but we're going to look at it very closely and we'll get you an answer.
Am I the only one who remembers that has a problem with this?
Ray, can you look into it and get back to us as soon as possible?
I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Do you want me to work on this or do you want me to submit the state finance numbers?
We need the state finance first.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
We have a, we have a canceled finance meeting next week. Could that be uncanceled? It could be uncanceled.
I'm not going to guarantee I'll have your your answers by by Monday, Tuesday. I already worked six days this week to try to fix some stuff for you guys. You want me to work another two, seven in a row?
Well, just get to us as soon as you can, Ray, with this.
But I promise you, I will get it to you as quickly as I can.
Okay.
There's a lot of work to go do to dig out how, what, when, because how many lines, there there's what? Just in the EFS, I've got seventeen hundred lines to balance. On this, there's, I think, twenty thousand lines, something like that. So to get to that type of detail, to figure out which line went awry and why it didn't roll upright. I do, I can't say this much, Mike, and I'm not trying to be a pain. As I stated the other day, there was an issue on the upload. It failed. It crashed. So there was a lot of manual data entry that went on to put this in. So, I mean, the bottom line, it did balance. So now we're going to have to go back and rebalance the line by line. I mean, but we'll have to get to the detail behind it.
Well, because the two thousand twenty five budget and the book should, they really should be the same amount.
And and I'm and I'm not saying it shouldn't. It's just going to take time. I can't wait. I mean, I'm coming in in the eleventh hour here to try to fix some stuff and it's it's going to take some time.
And Ray, I'm very appreciative of all that you've done for us and continue to do. We've had quite an overturn in leadership here with.
Trying to give anybody a hard time, but I I've been in your shoes and and it's, and I asked, and I'm going to stop right there. I'm not going to. I'll, we'll work on it. We'll get to it and we'll let you know when it'll be ready.
And I don't think Michael is insinuating anything. I think he just wants answers to the questions. That's all.
I know, and and the same question, and I have, again, I'm not trying to push backward. These same questions were asked two nights ago or late last week when we, during the budget process, when we're in the detail lines. Again, and that, and I said the same thing, that it's going to take some time to get to that that level of detail. The the data load for each of these individual lines went in and it crashed. We had to manually go in and update them. I'm not saying that it's an excuse, but it should not have crashed. So. So to go back in and at least the bottom line matches, that's, that's one third of the battle. Now, the rest of it is to get the, the balance of the, the lines to, to balance. So we'll get there. When I'm ready to do the budget transfer, I will come back to the board and say, this is what we're going to do. These are the lines we're going to need to move. And then you can either reject it or approve it. Okay, I'll, I'll ask for your approval to, to do that transfer because that will take board approval.
Alright, so. Get back to us as soon as you can and. Let us know.
They're gonna have to be, it's gonna have to be itemized so that each total adds up, okay? That, that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Matthew.
I'm good.
Okay, Dean.
Yeah, we're clearly talking right past another. And I appreciate Ray's position that he's been working very hard and he was not present for a lot of this. And that he has no response to this and why he has no response to this. I can appreciate Susan might not have a response to this. Appreciate whether there might not be anybody in this district anymore that has a response to this. But I wanna understand what the problem is. Second column is what we agreed to, we voted on, got it. Usually what happens is you vote on the budget. If that's the budget, then you go forward. If you under run categories, you under run. If you overrun, you overrun. But that first column is neither of those, right? First column doesn't represent. A, a live version. It's, it is a slightly alternative budget and that's the, that's the rock in our shoe. And if nobody has an answer right now, I get it. We still like one. Because I don't know if the district's been operating on a, on a sort of, on a slightly alternative budget. I think we would, we would like to know how that happened. Even if it's purely historical and totally in the rearview mirror. And it's never gonna happen again once we get competent people in place. I'm still curious about it. I'm only one.
This budget, in order to resolve the problem, we have to get to the root cause. And if we do a root, the right root cause analysis, we can fix it and we can move forward with it. Again, we'll have to get to that detail level to realign the budget the way it should be.
As far as, as far as Finance and Facilities Committee meeting goes, I thought it at the time when I was asked by choice whether we should have one. I thought, well, this is usually what's on there is a report from facilities and, and finance director and. You know, uh, well, we're already in the middle of the budget. What am I, we're gonna have one more meeting where three of our members are gonna attend and anybody else who wants to show up. To hear what we're already, you know, hearing. So I thought, eh, you know, let's just dispense with it for now. But if you wanna hold one on this issue. But again, I would ask, if we have a meeting next week. A Finance and Facilities Committee meeting next week. I mean, unless Sam's got something he'd like to add and talk to us about and, and enlighten us about. If nobody knows anything more next week, then what, what will we do? Happy to have a meeting, but I wanna make sure it's actually, we actually do something with our time.
Thank you. I just wanna voice my, my shared concern. And, and what Mike was pointing out. And I just wanna identify that policy three one six zero, as it is currently written. Requires. That any such transfers between functions. You know, needs to be. Notified, the board needs to be notified. You know, in a timely fashion. So. Whatever's happened is outside of policy. So, you know, the board is only as good as, as our policies. Dictate everything else below that is administration. So. In that light. You know, what would be a reasonable timeframe to expect? An answer on what occurred, how it occurred. I know you said as soon as possible, but I'm just thinking. Ranging outwards, roughly speaking, are we talking a week, two weeks, a month? A month, because we're in the middle of a budget session now for budget deliberation. And. You know, it's, it's a bit of a shake to the confidence as far as, you know, going through these deliberations. And making these allocations and reviewing these notes. We've discovered a number of discrepancies. In the process already and. So it does, it does shake the confidence moving forward on this budget if we're not even square on the budget that we approved. Nor are we, you know, whether it's by accident or intention, that, that, who knows? But. You know, we're not, we're not following board policy when it comes to this budget management. I want to point that out. A one six zero is still in effect as it written. It has not been revised. There are revisions that have been proposed, recommendations and budget committee. Which differ than what was, that differ vastly from what was proposed by the administration. So. Those are all areas of concern and need to be discussed. So what would be the reasonable timeframe to expect some sort of analysis on this?
Ian, may I intersperse something? It's a privilege. I'm asking you if you would allow me to.
Go ahead, you could speak back.
I'm deferring to, to.
Rather hear from the administration. I'm asking.
He doesn't, he said soon as he, Ray, you wanna say what you said before?
Rough time. What do we think? At least once. Don't calibrate my expectations.
Go ahead, Matthew. What do you wanna say?
Well, while, while Ray's reflecting on his answer. I think the key to me in, is that we are dealing with two, as I perceive things. We're dealing with two discrete issues. One is the issue of the handling of the budget where we have these apparent discrepancies. The other piece is the budget that we're working on. As far as I'm able to discern. Ray did not have any part in the budget that is, that we, for which we have concern. I personally want to have faith. That Ray is up and up, doing a good job. And I would like him to, personally like to see him focus on getting the current budget done right. And we have some warts on this current budget, but to get this current budget done right. And then go back as long as it takes and as much as it costs to get this right, so we can find out what happened and why. But that's just my personal feeling.
My, my concern is that. The budget that we're deliberating now for FY twenty six. Is based. On the previous year's budget. We have that as a reference point and a lot of the numbers have not been squaring up to what we approved. So it just makes it hard to calibrate. I guess is what I'm saying. So we need to sort of get square on FY twenty five. You know, and, and get a thorough understanding of, of what was actually spent where.
You're not mistaken. You're not mistaken. The challenge is one can only fit four quarts in a gallon container. And our container is not a gallon. Our container is the available human resource that we have. Whether we allocate those four quarts to do this first or to get our current budget. We're so close up against the wall, it's a choice for us to make. I'm not. I've shared my opinion, but it's, it's a group decision. I, I think we need to focus on this. And if we have to put an asterisk in our report and indicate our internal problems. Then by God, we'll put in the truth with the asterisk, but we've got to get through this year's budget.
Let me go with Jay and then Jen and then Mike. Go ahead, Jay.
So as I'm looking through the numbers under the column twenty twenty five budget book. This lines up exactly with. The published approved budget. I don't know what that first column represents. I don't know who created it. I know that Ray inherited this report. I think. The value of this report is the approved budget. Versus the year-to-date expenses. And year-to-date encumbrances. And the pending deficits by the line. If we could just. Agree that that first column. Doesn't agree with, with the approved budget, but that the other. Column does. Then I think the value of this document is in discussing the pending deficits. Until Ray can determine, you know, how that, I, I don't even know what that first. Column is supposed to represent, but the second column does represent what was approved. And if all these others.
Find out, Jay, with that first column.
But I think, I think the value of this document is determine why do we have these pending deficits in these other lines? So I, I don't know whether Ray's had any opportunity to study that yet either. But I just wanna point out that. You know, I, I think that's what we should be looking at. The adopted budget versus the year-to-date expenses and encumbrances and what's available.
Can tell you this much on the purchase services, you're, you're running, we, we've got some heavy expenditures for. Special needs students that we're, we're actually. Encumbering with right now. So, and. We don't, I've given instructions not to over encumber. But encumber in, in reality, what, what some of our needs are for these students. And, and we're trying to. One of the things that we're doing, looking at down the road is actually increasing the bid process internally on the business office. So that we can actually reassign some of the, some of the processes that are being done there as well. But it's, it's again, it's the same, same thing you've been asking about was the. Purchase services and the property services. Property services, I haven't, I don't have my. My arms around that yet. Again. When I came back a little more than a, what, a week and a half ago was to concentrate on the, the audits. Then other things happened as you're, as you're aware. So I am trying to get my, soon as tomorrow's finished. I've got one other important thing to do and that is testing of our new, of the upgrades on the operating system and then get back. Then, then jump into this full, full both feet. I mean. I'd be asking some of the same questions you guys are and I'm not, and again, I, I'm not trying to give anybody a hard time. But I'm, I'm, I'm back new in, in here again and it's, it, I just can't wave a magic wand to come up with answers. Quickly. It may take two weeks, it may take a month, it may take two months. I, until I find out what happened. And what it's gonna take to resolve the issues. I'm, I've gotta put my arms out. And oh, by the way, the other thing is the operation review is in, in kicking into high gear too. So the staff that we would normally apply to. To doing our normal job, we're going to be taking some of them and siphoning off because they're going to be going through interviews. So that it's gonna take. It's gonna take a, a. A united effort on the part of the business office, let's put it that way, to, to fix a lot of little things.
And, and then. No, Jen, she had a hand up. Yeah, I just didn't say you about now. Calm down. Go ahead, Jen.
So Ray. When you're doing your comparisons, right, are you doing? Are you doing, guess, the budget book or that nebulous budget?
I need to figure out what happened so that the budget got entered. Why is, why is there a variance between what they're showing here and what the budget book is? I don't.
What I think. Where we can solve this is we need to understand the staffing levels when this budget was approved. We're seeing the staffing levels now. So if there were additional staff that was added. And funds were transferred from purchase services to salaries. That is where we can sort of identify because that's where the increase is.
I, I, not to interrupt Jen and I apologize for that, but. To the best of my knowledge, there was no intentional increase or addition of salaries. In that fifty four million that you're seeing there. Because this is, I can go back and see if there were budget transfers. Once this was loaded. I think the only thing that was done was to try to correct it to bring it to within the budget book. But I don't believe there were any intentional. Salary moves.
Yeah, yeah.
And you, you're still understaffed, you're still, you're still understaffed on, on the projections, if you notice.
Exactly. So I don't think it's that. I think if we increase. The population. I don't think somebody signed themselves up for a raise. There is no. Like that, you know, that Ray.
There's, there's too many checks and balances for that to happen.
This can be answered if we get a full staffing because that's where the increase is and it. Correspondently decreased from purchase services, which I always think of as outside services. So that's just, that's from how I would normally attack this first. And then especially in that supply category, I believe our. Like the monies that we had set aside for the hundred thousand for the IT was in there too. So I'm not sure if that got utilized and.
Actually, IT is overspent this year already. We had to remember on the DOD fund.
Look at it, but yeah, no, if you, so I know we're not.
That much I know for a fact because before I left back in September. I had to, we, we, we went over budget almost immediately because we used to fund. Our Microsoft software, which everybody in the district uses. We had to fund that out of our own budget because it got cut out of the DOD funding. So that hundred fifty thousand put them right over the, right over the top immediately.
Exactly. So, and that's not with me looking at the numbers. That's just looking at a high level from what you've provided. That's where I would start looking to help yourself out.
Let me, let me.
And especially where you can see. Just as our regular, you know, our regular sheet, you can see that.
About this sheet here.
Yeah, and the one that Irene gave us before she left. There was an increase in the salary line. And I had asked her what exactly it was for and we never saw her again. So I never got a response to that, but it, it's definitely. Yeah.
Well, you will get responses. It's just gonna, I, I need it.
I know, I'm not. Please don't, please don't. You know how I am? I look at the numbers, you know, Mike looks at the numbers. We can, everyone in this room, like, we're all number geeks, so. So, yeah, no offense taken. We know you're jumping in. We totally appreciate that. We understand, like, you're in a position where you're limited staff. So our environment is finite. So we need the questions resolved and answered. First of all, we need to file. We can't miss filings. But when we're filing, we need to ensure that what we're filing is accurate. So timeliness is important, but accuracy is probably more important. It's no sense in having something timely and it's wrong and then we have to refile. Yeah.
I'm on your side.
Yep, I just don't want you to, we're all on, we're all on the same side.
Oh, I know, I know.
And we're all asking it, so.
It, it's, it's gonna take me a little time to get it, that's all. And, and again, I'm not trying to, and I'm not trying to push back. I'm, I'm just trying to. It's like, I, I heard it when I was listening in the other night. And I know we spoke about it at a meeting earlier today and it's, it's on my list of many things to do right now. Is to dig, get the, get the detail. We've got some new young staff that we need to train, so this would be good to. Let's see how, how good we can, they really are. So I may, I may do some reassigning there, so.
Yes, especially if they took forensic accounting.
We've been there.
Alright, so, so my first question, simple one. Are we going to look at the object code breakdown that we're provided as an attachment for this meeting? Or are we gonna stick on this one? Because if we're gonna go to the next one, I've got, I've got specific questions about overruns.
Do you have the optical one that we get in our packet?
I do have it in front of me, yeah.
Clint's gonna be, let me just make sure he's gonna put that up.
This is the one that's very, very small when he puts it up, by the way.
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine, I guess.
Now, Mike, I do apologize ahead of time. I'm looking at this about as. Now, Mike, I do apologize ahead of time. I'm looking at this about as, um, like I, like I told Bev the other night, I'm, I'm picking up pieces here, so I, I apologize ahead of time. If I don't have an answer, I will get back to you.
I, I've just got a question on, on three, three codes, and, uh, at least on one, I can, uh, probably provide some background. But I'll, I'll wait until it's, it's one oh five.
Well, he has it in front of him.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
About Ian, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of follow up on a couple of things. Um, one, the, uh, which I think you're going to talk about right now, but, uh, the positions that were mentioned about in the administration line.
Oh, you can do that instead if you want, if you want to do one oh five.
Yeah, there's, there's a one oh five question, which I did send an email follow-up on, uh, in January, earlier in January. Um, and, uh, Lori only responded that there was a, an account in one oh, it's just, that was the line. But there is no history attached to it as far as like where it came from, who approved it, but there was a, a position that was described as having, should have been assigned to the one one four line, the one oh five line. So that is a bit of a, a, a question. Um, and so like, how that happened and, and, and not going to prevent that from happening. There's, uh, four staff members, this is an email dated December, actually December, uh, December nineteenth. There are four staff members that are miscoded to account one oh five. They should be expended to account one one four. And that's why, uh, there's account one oh five, we're showing projected deficit. Um, as to what those titles were or how they came to be, that's another, like, those questions were not answered. And this, the crash of the software, um, that happened recently?
No, that happened last, when we were uploading the budget itself.
Okay.
The budget upload crashed. Wasn't the software, it was the upload crashed.
That was in July, right?
That was, that was early July.
July, okay. Um, I'm not sure. I don't recall, uh, were we notified about that, that part of our report?
It's an internal operating process.
Um, still, I think all in all, it'd be good to make us aware of that in the future. Uh, if, if something like that happening, because that could lead to also these, these, you know, um, ancillary glitches, you know, if there had to be like a a, a manual entry to recover it. Um, understandably, that's a daunting task. And I do appreciate everything you do, Ray. I don't mean to be, I'm not trying to be confrontational in any way.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm listening. I mean.
Yeah, and, and I just wanted a question, the operational review. You know, my memory is that we had agreed to try to cap that, the, the amount that we participate in that to a certain amount so they do not disrupt our normal operations, as much as possible. I thought we were going to cap the hours.
Well, we always knew this was a very difficult time, but I didn't realize we would lose yet another business director and we would be dealing with some of the thing, the fallout of this. So I think that it's, um, would you say, Ray, it's kind of come in waves? Like, there was some initial work and then it quieted down and now they're asking for more now? Is that right?
Yes, yes. Now, I haven't seen who, what, when and where that he's asking for, but I have heard that he's, he wants to come in and, uh, speak with individuals now. So, um, it, it's tough because we're in the middle of training new staff, uh, we're in the middle of cross-training old staff, and we're in the middle of building a budget. Um, so it, but you know something? We'll get, that, I mean, if we stay positive, we'll get there one way or another.
Well, and I think that twenty, the, the auditors are wrapping up on two thousand twenty-four as well.
Soon as, as soon as I click send tomorrow and we get it certified and I send off all the documentation to the auditors, we will be, we will be done. I hope, unless they come up with other questions.
To revisit all that subject and, and check my understanding, my memory. You know, I thought we had a consensus on the board that we were going to try to cap and limit our participation in that to a point where that it did not inhibit our ability to get through this busy time of year where we do have all these things happening with the budget construction, liberation review and all that. You know, and, and, you know, the town would have to understand that, you know, the operational view is, is, is certain level of priority. Um, whereas our day-to-day operations and our future setups are, in my opinion, a higher priority.
I couldn't agree with you more.
So, uh, you know, again, I, I just wanted to kind of revisit that conversation at some point in the very near future, or just, you know, if we could just get recalibrated on that and make sure that we're not losing our people's efforts on the immediate needs of the district and the filing requirements in order to serve the operational review.
I've said that, that we have to prioritize and important reports that go to the state and audits and those things that are timely, need to happen first, and getting this budget together and working with you all on twenty twenty-six is our top priorities for me.
So, and, and I, I do want to interject, I'm not using the operational review as, as a, as a crutch, I mean, but it, it is, it is on the table of other things that we do have to get done as well.
But I don't think I should supersede, and I'm just kind of curious, you know, do we have like a firm cap on the hours for some of the state?
I don't think we have a firm cap.
I don't know of any cap, but I think that, I think, Ray, though you would say that you have been focused on first things first with the twenty-four audit wrapping up.
Yep. That's not the question. That, I mean, that, we all agree with that, but I don't think that's the question.
All right. No, we don't have a cap.
Can we set a cap?
What, what might be useful as an adjunct is, uh, how far are we into this process? One of the challenges we faced is that the scope of work was not, it was not really defined. It was, this is the scope of work, but we may add more stuff to it later. Uh, that would be very helpful to know if they could say, we're about twenty percent through, we're about forty percent through. Then we'd have an idea of what we've spent and what we're going to look forward to spending. And it'll also help us come up with a figure so that when we go and ask for some support from the town, we're not asking for a blank check, but we're giving a, a figure based on not only our needs, but also on their assessment of where we are in this process.
We could find out how far they are with the operational review. I'll, I'll ask Jen.
Okay, that'd be terrific.
All right, Dean.
No, wait, I, I, the only reason I get my turn because they hadn't projected it yet.
Wow, okay.
I waited patiently, but, um, I, I want to know, I want to look at, scroll down to, um, account six thirty-four. That's, um, uh, basically, um, gas for buses. And I'll wait for the scroll, I'm not gonna.
Are we at six thirty-four? Can we highlight it or something? Put, put a marker on it.
That's right, the bottom.
It's the bottom, it's the last one.
So we're, we're currently overspent in this budget. Uh, could you say what the, um, the total amount, uh, we have in the budget for, like, you know, as the, uh, the budget to work with?
I'd have to go back and calculate the number of gallons, but there were some leftover gallons in.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I just, we can't see the columns here, the column names. Uh, so could you just, for six thirty-four, what was the starting amount to work with? The, the budget you're working with?
The budget that we're working with? I believe it was two hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Uh, no, just on line six thirty-four, I'm wondering, uh, so it's two hundred, so can you say exactly?
At the top of the first number, one fifty-five, one thirty-one, is that the column you're asking about?
Yeah.
That was year-to-date twenty twenty-three as of one thirty-one twenty-three. So remember, we looked at a couple of years.
No, I just want, I just want the, like, the FY twenty-five budget number that you're working off of.
Oh, that was the two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-nine oh eighty-three, yep.
Okay, so it's that, it's that third column, two eighty-nine oh eight oh three. And we're over by seventy-one thousand and sixty-seven dollars, is that correct?
Got to remember, that's a projection right now.
It's encumbered too.
Because of the encumbrance. Now, if we use less, if we use less fuel, you may come in pretty much balanced on that. Depends on the amount of fuel that's, that's actually used for the buses.
Are we expecting to encumber more?
No, I would not. I mean, most of these encumbrances, for example, most of these encumbrances, um, are pretty much locked in because we did a, a, um, a pre-buy last August to lock in our pricing. We're looking at locking up, doing a pre-buy for this upcoming year as well. The own, and normally when we budget for a pre-buy, we put in that, that budget number, plus maybe another couple of percent increase only uh, to cover any storage fees that may arise down the road. What happened here was that there was, you had some leftover gallons, so we ended up, uh, paying storage fees on that. And then we ended up buying the remainder of the balance of the fuel that we're going to use. Um, we're using the same source as, as the town, we're using, uh, East River. And, um, we're actually getting better prices than, than a couple of the rests like Cracked and, um, it's a, a couple of the other ones that are out there. Um, because what happened, the way I've worked it out with East River, our pricing comes in less than some of the rests because they, we're not paying deliveries like from here to Litchfield because they cover the whole state. And what they do is they amortize some of those delivery fees across everybody that's part of the, that, that particular consortium. So we're, we're paying, we're actually saving about eight to ten cents a gallon in the upcoming, uh, contract. So, uh, over, over the current rest. As a matter of fact, our upcoming budget, um, is about two seventy a dollar, I mean, two dollars and seventy cents a gallon for diesel and about the same price for, uh, heating oil.
All, all right, but, but currently, based on this sheet, it's seventy-one thousand dollars over, which is for almost a twenty-five percent, um, uh, deficit. And, and that's from that two hundred eighty-nine thousand, um, eighty-three dollar number.
Correct.
In the adopted FY twenty-five budget book that is on our website that the town approved, the number is three hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
That's a better.
So that's up by, that's, that's a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars higher than this two hundred eighty-nine, uh, eighty-three dollar number you're working with, which is, I understand, which was what was entered. But what I'm saying is that the adopted budget approved by the town had sufficient funds to cover gasoline for school buses. What has been entered in does not have sufficient funds to cover gasoline for school buses. And it is because of this over a hundred thousand dollar difference lower was entered in that number, uh, than before. And I'll save the time, let's go up to six thirty-three, fuel oil. You can see it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That's that third column over. That's what you are working with, as the school system is working with in that object code for FY twenty-five budget. You might not be surprised by what I'm going, by what I'm going with here is that it's different and lower than the number that was in the FY twenty-five adopted budget book. So instead of a hundred and ninety, uh, thousand dollars there, it should be rightly two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, which would be more than enough to cover, I admit, a small deficit, but we'd be in the surplus there. So the, the six thirty-three and six thirty-four are two object codes of, because of their nature and purchasing, I think would be really quick to look back and figure out how those two lines are different from, uh, what was approved in the adopted FY twenty-five budget. I don't think that would take weeks. I don't think it would take months. And I don't think it's searching through many, many subcodes. This one, look at six thirty-three, six thirty-four, and I think you'll start to find out what ha- happened and why it happened without board approval and what happened between what was adopted and what the school system is working off of.
Any other comments, Dean? That ain't good.
Yeah.
So along the same lines, everyone's already figured this one out, but I figured I should, I've been with myself this first column, the so-called first column of the sheet that we got tonight. Quote in twenty twenty-five budget. That was my question, which is in, in the proposed budget, when we're looking for comparisons, which one of these two columns, the bulk budget or the alternative, the shadow budget or whatever you want to call it? It's the alternative one that's used in every case, and you spotted a couple of instances of that. So for example, and I won't go through everything, and I can't go through everything. When we look at our latest version of, you know, the proposed budget, we've got the proposed FY twenty-six budget and then the twenty-five budget. That figure that's in here is really the first column, not the second column, not the one that's actually published in our budget book. So as advertised, it's a, we're, the, the proposed increase in salaries and wages is five point three percent. In reality, it's six point two percent from what we approved last year. So to the extent that we are thinking about the twenty-six budget and, 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 and thinking it over and wondering is something reasonable, unreasonable, what happened, what didn't happen? To the extent we're relying on the older figures, and admittedly, they're not all tremendously out of whack, but maybe some of them are, we can't rely on that middle column here that says FY twenty, twenty-five budget. Those are, as far as we know, fictional numbers. Maybe most of them are correct. They do add up to the same thing at the end. But on some of the bigger categories like salaries, for example, uh, purchase services, they don't. And I don't know which lines are the culprits when I look at these object codes. So, uh, I'm not even taking it with the grain of salt, I'm just not taking it.
Agent?
All right. Ray, I just want to start, um, and say that I appreciate you. Um, I think lots of people on the board really appreciate your work and, um, we would be lost without you right now to some extent. Um, so I do appreciate you. That's right, that's what I'm saying. But, um, so I, I wanted, uh, you know, I, I understand your frustration with our questions, um, but I, I, I also want to share the sentiment of everyone else that's spoken on this that, um, I'm sure you can understand our concerns, how, um, five categories out of eight have changed. And the net sum of those changes is exactly zero. Um, you know, so that, that's, you know, it's a concern at this point, and it's something that, um, that we really need to, to get to the bottom of. And, and to switch over to the, um, town's operational review, I, I would like to request that, um, the board have some discussion because, um, the town has not agreed or offered to fund the operational review. And under all of these numbers, this, the bottom line, eighty-seven million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-four, there's no money in there to fund, um, the, um, basically, we're paying, um, time on Ray's work on it. So that's just straight time that's not in our budget and, um, and it's also taking away from other things. Um, so without, um, without any money to pay for this, I would like to have some real board discussion on how far, I mean, are we going to spend twenty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars more? Um, and what is the effects on our students going to be? Um, if we are going to spend a lot of money on this. So I would request that, um, if workload from that operational review is ramping up, I mean, we, we were originally told it was going to be a couple hours a week or something, and now it seems like it's more than that.
But that's when we had, um, a business manager and Ray, and Ray was going to do the operational review. Now we don't have the business managers, so.
Yeah, and our needs have changed, uh, uh, specifically, Ray, needs for you. Um, so, you know, because you're, 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 um, wearing a lot of hats right now, so, um, I think that, um, or at least I would appreciate, um, some real board discussion on how much we want to put into the operational review right now. Um, versus, um, well, just the general, how much financially is the board at willing to contribute to it? And, um, if we can wait until after we put out, you know, get through the budget.
Just, not to, and I apologize for interrupting, um, uh, just to let you know, I think I've spent most of my time was spent gathering all the data that the auditor, that, uh, the, uh, operation, uh, Joe was looking for. The rest of my time is basically been spent working on, um, stuff for the board in, in support of, uh, this month anyway, but, uh, was in, in support of, um, the, uh, EFS and different things like that right now. And some budget work, not a lot right now, but some budget work. So, um, it just, it just, um, it's, it's, there's a lot on the plate right now, let's put it that way.
How much time would you say you spent on operational review already, Ray? How much time would you say you spent on operational review already, Ray?
Fifteen, eighteen hours tops, not not that much. I mean, and that was all in December. I haven't, all I know is we've got notification that um. They do want to set up some appointments and some meetings with 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 some of the staff. I don't know who, I don't know the specifics, um but then tha- that's the extent of what I know so far.
Do they go through you?
They normally been good, they've been going through, they didn't know that I was on board here. Um, to help fill in, but they've been, I believe they've been going through uh Susan at the moment.
Yeah, so uh just. I'm not sure how this is structured, but I I would be concerned with our staff consulting with the operational review people in an interview status without some sort of legal counsel.
Well, I'm just concerned that we have staff that is new and staff that's been cross-trained and staff doing the work. That needs to happen for this budget, for the current budget and for the proposed budget. And so to take them offline, even for interviews and to answer questions at this time is just not feasible. I mean, in the future, once we've gotten through this, perhaps, but.
And also to that end, I mean, uh, I would be interested to know, like, are are all these inquiries that are coming through the operational review being vetted? By our attorney, make sure that they're legitimate and within the jurisdiction of the opera.
I haven't, I haven't seen anything about the interview or interview questions. I knew that they've wanted, that was in their scope, but I haven't seen any details about it.
Scope, but is it their legal jurisdiction to to ask? That's what, you know, I I'd be concerned about because, you know, there's been some overreach in the past.
Alright, you don't need to.
Yes, I I do have quite, I I was concerned about interviews and taking more staff time, um but I um. I echo Ian's concern with um. We need to make sure that that um we're doing what's best for the district and what we're required to do.
Anything else so we can move along? Okay. Ray, you have anything else you want to say?
Heck, no. You think I want to belabor this anymore?
Well, thank you, Ray, and uh we, yeah, we appreciate you and.
Everybody, I mean, I I don't get upset when when you guys, I know I upset some of you, and that's not my intent.
Forward to your answers.
Well, we'll we'll get them for you, okay? Have a good night, everyone.
You too, Ray.
Can we five minute recess?
Yeah, five minute recess. It is eight forty seven about, and we're back from our recess caucus. The next item on the agenda is um Sam. Building directive building grounds, giving us a school update.
The first item was uh radon testing, the state required radon testing in our schools was completed. A little over a week ago, sent out to the laboratory by Mystic Air, received the results today. And all seven schools uh were reported uh clear in all the testing.
All radon testing?
I'll be sharing that with the principals so that they can share it with some teachers. But with the teachers and with the union. Uh, the second item on my list is the uh bleachers at Fitch High School. Somebody asked why it isn't on the uh. C I P list again, uh that is because it's in the uh field study task force uh area. Uh which they're still working on, however. Matthew asked me about the report regarding that that we uh commissioned from Silver Fettichelli Architects. Um, and their recommendation, they assessed the bleachers and found that uh they are degrading, obviously. They said they are sixty years old plus. The the bleachers on the home side may be sixty plus, but the ones on the uh visitor side uh are not. Because they did not exist when I went to high school here, fifty four years ago.
Thirty five, those were the same.
They're younger than fifty four.
Well, something like that, yeah. And and so their recommendation is actually to uh. Their recommendation to the new, not the cost effective to retrofit the existing bleachers. Uh with the uh the level of degradation of the structure presently. Uh and also in uh moving new uh new grandstands, they would be uh. Handicap accessibility. Present codes, uh if that were done, so I will um share this with uh. I I'll probably share this with the field task committee to uh at some point when I get a chance to.
Would that be a useful document to share with John Burt and the mayor? In your opinion?
I can do that.
Do you think they build to the same capacity? I I don't know if the large size is needed or not. For the home ones, I'd say.
Yeah, um. I think that um, well, first of all, the handicap accessibility takes up quite a bit more room uh in that space, so. You may not have as many uh seats available for the general public, but. I know that first row is going to be wider so that you get to wheelchairs and that sort of thing in there, so. I would guess that they'd be roughly the same size, uh close to the same size, but maybe not the same capacity. There would also be a um a press box on top as well, which would be. A a modular press box included in it, which that's what's recommended by Silver Fettichelli.
And I I haven't been keeping up with the the field uh task force, but. Um, is it expected that there'd be going out for bonding for this, or it seems like it's going to be quite a large set of projects?
Their estimate for removing the existing bleachers, uh demolition, et cetera. Um, and building the new is uh three million six hundred thirty seven.
Wow, three million what?
Just for the bleachers?
That would be two sets of bleachers, yes.
And and then I'd assume that'd be done because the field, of course, as we all know. I assume that might be done as a a project. Because I'm worried about the timeline, it's taking a long, long time to not because of the school system, but because the the task force. And and the the size of the the scope of the projects too, uh but, uh, yeah.
That's that's presuming the lead paint that you were talking about.
Um, well, those, again, those bleachers were painted many times over before I even arrived here ten years ago, so. While um the paint on the outside, the outside layer uh appears to be and tested to be um. Latex in lots of places, I suspect that others are probably lead paint as well, so. That would all be done as part of the project, testing it completely and having it uh removed in an appropriate way.
Yeah, I know that the the A F T F was was looking at, you know, that the project does include like everything. Like the big project and it would, but that's like a huge like. I I forget what the latest price tag is, but it's it's like, I think, twenty million or something like that.
That's that's a generational investment, right? That's still with the project.
But as you can see, like the bleachers that we have, we're a generational investment of their.
I guess they lasted a long time.
But uh, so, you know, I I would hope that, you know, we would try to look at a way to really. Try to partner with the state or or find whatever partners we can, you know, maybe through E B Pfizer and and wherever else we could look. Um, to try to get it, get the big project done, because doing it piecemeal, I don't think would be a great way to address it. Um, but that is a huge lift, and but it would it would take a huge uh, a community-wide effort to do. And a lot of cooperation, but that is would be the most efficient way to correct the issue, in my opinion.
Uh, you mean all town fields that they're like?
I'm just thinking mostly about the high school facilities, like, but yeah, like the the big, big project is is, yeah, townwide. But when you're looking at the high school, I mean, there's a lot of integrated needle. You know, so like if you are not leaders, well, the proposal for fixing the fields actually has the leaders moving. More towards into the hills, um and then also creating a whole practice field downfield. And uh so there's the, it's, you're doing piecemeal, like, it would take a lot of strategic planning to do it in pieces. Have it all into lock as you do each piece. So I think, you know, my my estimation is the most efficient way to do it is to do it all one big thing at once.
It's probably most of course effective too.
Yeah, probably.
And taking an informed guess that that would include the bathrooms and.
You know, I'll, the A F T F has been very comprehensive and and I I think it's Ken Frost or or uh is doing the design. Um, the designs, you know, again, very comprehensive, they did address, they they took in all the concerns. That, you know, the community uh voiced about, you know, the facilities, the uh access for A D A. You know, and and, you know, and also just, you know, and the big, the big decision point, of course, is it's synthetic versus natural, but that's just. That's a a bit of a cherry on top as far as the whole structural reframing of the athletic facilities there. Because he also looked at ways to turn the upper field into a into a softball field. Uh have like a a combo like football slash like baseball practice field off to the side of of the main football field.
And and the football field becomes multipurpose too.
Right, exactly, so they expand the track facilities, yeah, so I mean. I I look forward to working with them and really trying to advocate strongly for this this project, because I I think that, you know, would also be a great. Thing for the board to get on, get in support of, because it enhances, you know, the draw to to Fitch and students to, you know. Families to come to this this district.
Yeah, it's every bit as a, how much of a signature uh piece in the the town's um um. Really uh properties and and facilities as the Fitch Auditorium that's used all the time.
I think about that vintage wing too.
If I could, uh, Sam, I I, this is a little bit off topic of of what you were talking about, but just in general, the lead conversation got me thinking, um. It's my understanding that the state recently lowered the levels for like lead in in water. I'm just wondering like how we go with our testing and on our.
We just got a, um, for instance, this building uh is monitored by Southeastern. Our contractor for here, and I just got actually a bunch of. Forms to fill out for the new recommendations, so I'm just starting here with this building, but we'll be moving on with the rest of it shortly.
But we don't drink this water. We have water brought in.
So, did you do lead testing already? Are you doing it?
I haven't done it in a while.
Are you planning on doing it?
If the board wants to do it, yes. Well, yes.
Is is that a thing that we could just make part of like a, like every other year by annual? Or like, set up some kind of regular schedule to monitor?
It's I recall from years ago.
The year might be a little too soon, I think.
Right, of course, I'm just throwing that out there as.
It's uh, as I recall from years ago, I think there's a water fountain in the vintage wing for Fitch that uh tests a high in lab uh lead, I think that was just. Uh sort of turned off, I don't know if it was turned on again somehow, but and there was a.
Changed pipes there and and then uh when that thing went, when it broke, we didn't have a replacement for it. It was old, so we took it out.
And then there was uh maybe a Northeast Academy.
Bottle fillers throughout the building. So I think we still have two more to put in.
The the bottle uh fillers are very much appreciated.
Filtered water.
I think there was a, maybe a sink in the nurse's office at Northeast Academy or or maybe. And one of the bathrooms that needed was tested high and then uh is there's the um process was to. Uh run it at the start of the days, maybe that was like you started each day to run the water and then. Uh that was um implemented, I don't know if that's still going on. Okay, and that was Northeast Academy, I think, and I can't remember any other places.
We say maybe because the levels had dropped, maybe you could start testing the lead in the water again.
Yeah, well, we're gonna have to put some money in the budget for it too, because it isn't cheap, because the city charges us for them. Brian utilities charges that testing, or if we had to go to another contract.
If I'm able to be recognized, um, when they came, if you guys go back and like, if you if you guys go back to when the state reps came and spoke. There's money in the state budget for repairs of lead because they're lowering the levels, and don't quote me exactly what the grants are. But please find out, uh, Summer spoke and Connolly, uh, you know, that they. No, if you talk about these pipes, things can be possibly replaced.
We'll reach out to them. Yeah.
Okay, so maybe you could reach out to Senator Summers and Andre. Since Chris is no longer a rep. Alright, Adrian.
I was just gonna ask, speaking specifically to the current safety of the bleachers, was there any opinions asked for or voiced on that?
They didn't, they didn't mention any particular problem with using them presently.
Alright.
But I didn't ask him that specific question either, but I think they would have said something if they thought that was unsafe to use them, but they don't meet code.
Yeah, so, no, I know that the the gaps between the, like, where the footrest section and the seats are are pretty big, so. Small child, like, like be able to fit them, and then there's not, like, the handrails are probably insufficient. Um, and climbing, so um, is there a timeline on when the Athletic Fields Committee might be making a recommendation?
Do you know that, Ian?
Um, yeah, actually, they're they're um. They're reaching, they've already reached out to the town council to do a presentation with them, they've uh and they're waiting for us. To fit them into theirs, well, they're gonna come to us after they talk with the town, the town council, so. But they have basically everything ready to go, they they got the package they believe is is good, they have, you know, the numbers. They're they're satisfied, they're essentially done with the project as far as the extent that they can go. The rest is up to the town and the board and the community at large, as far as like what kind of investment.
And and definitely not in this budget cycle, of course.
You know, basically, like, I I believe is going to be proposed as a referendum at some point. Towards the end of this year, so it is conceivable like in the months between now and and uh. I believe the cutoff for referendums is like September or October, they have to get filed. So. Come with a ballot this year.
So i- if I can send that report to anybody who wants it, or you can stop by and read it if you want, or if somebody wants it, I'll email it to them, but.
Would you mind emailing it to the board at all?
Everybody wants it, I'll send it.
You're done, Sam? Did you finish with the HVAC testing?
Thank you, pardon?
The HVAC testing, did you finish? What are you doing at?
Yes, at both Northeast and C K. That was not, I got the report.
Okay, alright, alright, when you get to the report, I'm sure you share with us.
Tell them last week, they have the report last week, but I just still haven't seen it.
Any other questions for Sam? Nope.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
I made one note, I was curious, I saw that you had the answer in there. The stains, as you see them, are not sixty years old. The substructure is sixty years old, the the consultants believe that the aluminum replaced wooden.
That would make sense.
Yeah, so that you're thinking, sixty, I mean, I know aluminum does oxidize the way uh steel does, but. That explains why they look a little more modern than just sixty. The wood was replaced, I can believe it now, sixty years ago, it would have gone with.
Put that in the budget. Okay, um, next is committee reports, policy, Matthew?
Okay.
So, um.
Thank you, Sam. We're gonna be doing a couple policies here.
I will make a motion for the purposes of discussion, I move to approve policy.
No, 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 this committee report.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, you'll hear the policy committee report in a few moments.
Okay.
All right, we'll be quick, we just did most of it, um. The first half of the meeting was discussions on Ed Rising, event sports photography and unified music. And we approved sending them to the board, boards obviously already approved that. Um the other thing on our agenda was discussion on honors offerings beyond tenth grade. That discussion was um it it went over AP and IB offerings and some of the reasoning. Um that we we offer some honors classes in some subjects um in eleventh and twelfth grade. Um but some others not, and um and they went over the reasoning for all that in that meeting. Anybody give any additions to that, like?
No, it's a very enlightening meeting, so it's a must-see TV.
It was a great meeting, and um we had um two vice principals and the principal of Fitch there, so we had. Great presenters and it was very informative and great reasoning behind a lot of the questions that we've had as board members.
All right, next is financing facilities, we know you didn't have a meeting.
January, no, there was either, it was either there was a schedule conflict of some sort, or maybe I think overall, I remember my conversation with Joyce, I think overall, there was.
I think it was going budget.
Diving into budgets, so unless we could find something special to put on the on the agenda for the committee, it's just gonna be a review of. Finances and facilities, well, we got that already. So.
Okay, next is Learn, um. At Learn, we had a meeting on January ninth. And we talked about the teacher residency program, remains a key program for Learn. Which function similarly to an apprenticeship, targeting individuals with a bachelor's degree. Were looking to transition into teaching, and we have one person in that program.
I think we have two this year, maybe one for next year.
Okay, and uh these participants work as paraprofessionals in districts. While compete completing coursework through the agency's alternative route. Program allowing them to earn certification within one year and begin teaching the following year. Um over the past four years, the program has successfully placed one hundred and thirty-four diverse teachers. So that's pretty good. Uh the second thing we talk about was the legislative session officially begins, that was this week, January ninth. And a Senate bill has been introduced aimed at increasing resources for students, schools, and special education. However, there's a need for further clarification on the specifics of this bill. Lawmakers are aware of the pressing need for more educational funding, but challenges remain due. To the end of federal funding and existing budgetary constraints in Connecticut. And the upcoming session is expected to be competitive and full of negotiations. And then you all had a legislative breakfast also, right? Maybe you'll talk about that later on. The Friendship School had a mu- museum night and they had like nine hundred family members, that was great. And oh, Learn is undergoing significant changes as part of its evolving school structure. The Friendship School will transition from pre-K program to a pre-K to K model next year. The school opened its lottery January first with two hundred and fifty applicants already received. The Marine Science Magnet High School opened its lottery on October first and will close in the coming weeks. On the regional multicultural magnet school will phase out its kindergarten and add a sixth grade. They learn, they wanna go uh to a middle school. So they want um the RMS, uh RMMS school to go up to the eighth grade. So when they build their new early childhood center, that's gonna be kindergarten to second. And a regional multicultural magnet school would be three to eight.
Are they gonna have preschool too, though?
Yeah, they're gonna have preschool too, and an infantile program, you know, yeah, yeah, and that's all for that. I won't go on and on.
So that's interesting, they're moving back to sort of a primary school model.
Yeah, they are.
Really interesting.
So, okay, uh athletic fields?
Um pretty much already covered most of the essential items on that with uh talking about the the project design. And costs have all been kind of rendered pretty well firm, um and the task forces now in process of reaching out to town council. Go to bed and uh looking at ways to get it funded, possibly bring me to a referendum.
Do they still have two options on that, like artificial fields or natural fields or go to mix or?
Like that, that's still a little, like, you know, they have like basically optional option to.
Uh trails, Matthew?
They need quarterly, not until March, uh library, nothing new to report. Uh could I make a comment on legislative breakfast? We had, I would say sixty to seventy people there.
Full house.
It was a full, it was a full house. Three things, uh legislature noted that even though it's supposed to be a long session. There's already some discussion about the potential need for a special session. Once the priorities of the new federal administration become clear. Uh and legislative and executive decisions at the federal level are made. For education, this means keeping an eye on forthcoming title funds, IDEA funds. And ODA streams, I had sent a letter out about that potential some weeks ago. Uh the number one item talked about was special education. And how the current reimbursement formula uh can really make a huge difference with one or two. High-needs students coming into the district, one district present there. Had two high-needs students go off the district and drop their budget request by three percent. And then the neighboring one got those same two students and had to bump their uh budget up. So they're hoping that there'll be some revisiting of this reimbursement. And uh Senators Austin, Summers, and Marx uh assured us that special education aid formula. Is the top item of the legislature's uh agenda as Senate Bill Number One. Did I miss anything?
No, you didn't, nice job. I do have, I was gonna put something in a board note too, but we do have the Casbo has published the legislator. Legislative priorities, and that's a pretty good document, and so I can also include that.
I'm sure that'll be appreciated.
Um library, Matthew?
Um, nothing to report.
Okay. Okay, next is the consent agenda, uh do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? I'll second it. All right, any discussion on the consent agenda? Everybody got to read all the minutes?
So I did.
I know you were excited to read all this stuff. Mike, you got something you want to say?
Yeah, just uh in general with the minutes, um like for for instance, tonight, we got that um last minute. Handout that happens from time to time and uh at meetings, um I don't know that they have to go. They have to be, I'd like them to appear, they should appear somewhere either in the agenda or the minute side of things, so it's online for later.
Don't always ask for that, so we do get that to her, even if they've been like coming to you.
Yeah.
Didn't make it in the agenda, we always give it to her, so she has it then for the minutes.
But but then, but then to post it online, I I guess the only place you could put it is with the minutes at that point. Because the, there's two, if you go to a meeting, you can look at the agenda, and then you can click on these attachment links, which I hope they're permanent. And then, or you go to the minutes after they've been approved, it'll be up there, but sometimes we we miss that document in the in the sweep. Uh and I think it's important or later on to have that.
Good point. All right, anything else about the minutes?
Just that's amazing, but she keeps track of it all.
Then I have Joyce, who also double checks and, yeah, so we have a team.
Okay, all those in favor of approving attachment three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, say aye. Oppose? Abstentions, approve nine to zero. All right, no old business, okay, onto new business, and the first thing is. Policy discussion and possible action regarding a first reading of policy five one three one point eight one. Electronic devices, attachment eighteen, you're on, Matthew.
Uh so I will make a motion for purposes of discussion. That we approve policy P fifty-one thirty-one dot eight one, electronic devices as a first reading.
I second it.
Okay, so. For some time, there's been question as to the. Positive and negative effects of having unlimited or inconsistent. Uh policies in the various schools regarding appropriate student use of cell phones. Uh you all have seen some of the background information I shared about how districts in Connecticut and beyond. And even beyond the country have approached this issue. Over the course of the last five months, we've had a number of meetings at the policy committee that have involved principals at Fitch and middle school. And Clint and Susan, um and the administration on its own. Adopted uh the equivalent of regulations, I'm not sure if that's the right word for it. And the new policy, which differentiates at the elementary, middle, and high school. Is in the student handbooks as of this year and has been in effect since the beginning of the year. There is no permitted use of under these regs, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong.
It's been in the handbook for a while, but we're sticking to what's in the handbook, so they've reviewed it, so it has been in the handbook for a while.
Okay, I'll leave it at that, uh there is no no student use during the school day and elementary school level. There is no student use in the middle school during from first bell to last bell. And in the high school, there is no student use allowed in classes during instructional time. Uh students, they're demur mature, uh they can use them in hall hallway periods, lunch periods. And obviously in transportation, obviously, if a student has a particular need that's recognized in an IEP or five oh four. That trumps any of our regulations, and there is also sufficient latitude. That if a individual student has uh a specific need, Ian mentioned. That there are certain applications on cell phones that can help somebody monitor their blood sugar levels. Uh there may be a case where somebody is very ill in the family, that these will go through the principal's office. At the high school and individual adjustments will be made. I think that's the background to it, would either of my colleagues like to add anything, Andrea, Ian? Before we discuss the language itself?
No, I have uh nothing to add.
No, I'm fine, I'm I'm fine with what you said.
Okay, so you have the document ahead of you, it is brief. There's only one line that's uh being recycled from the old document, um we don't need to read that aloud, do we? Uh do we, it's up on the, it's up on this, the the screen, so I guess we're all open to questions.
And now it more carefully monitors regulations that are strict, were stricter than the original policy.
Yeah, the old, the old regulations did allow some latitude on a class-by-class basis according to the teacher. But having observed when I was briefly working as a substitute, there was differentiation between teachers and it was a bit confusing.
It was confusing. And now we have Chromebooks and they have apps and they have other resources that, you know, back in the day, they were using cell phones for. Any questions?
So to, just to go up, Melanie's thing about staff, this has nothing to do with staff, correct? It's just students that this policy.
This this policy has, is about students only. Uh if the, that was our focus in the policy committee at this time, if the board wants to look at staff use. Uh we can take a look at it, but I I'm not advising that, I'm not advising that.
Yes, this dude. Michael?
Just quickly, so a- along with this, there's a companion regulation, which is. Consistent with the the handbooks, but.
Right after.
Yeah, and and so, but that wasn't in like our board policy, this is a new, this is a new. Regulation in the sense that it's hadn't been bundled with our policy before, I couldn't find this particular one.
We basically took what we had in the, there was a lot of work that built up to this principal's meeting over the summer. And and how they were going to make sure that they were following the handbook regulations, even before we redid policy.
And then one thing always comes up, I'm sure it came up, your meetings um is, so of course, there's the carve-out for the IEPs, right? Um the, there used to be in our policy, I used to stipulate these things, but of course, now I like the umbrella term better, but. I was wondering about um in emergency circumstances where the safety of, we used to have that language, actually, I can read it. In the policy, it was a, you know, uh an articulated carve-out is number C. Uh unless the following circumstances, so I'll just read them, one, the supervising teacher grants permission, I can see why we wouldn't want that anymore. Uh because of that consistency, B, use of the device provided in students' IEP, that's still here, it's just not. Particularly, it's handled in the regulations, uh then C, I I don't know about this one, if it's anywhere. If it is needed in an emergency that threatens the safety of students, staff, or other individuals as a parent. Um that was a, my kids having a cellphone in situations like that could arise, um that that was a. Uh a benefit, I thought, but I don't know if we still have that in our policy, it's not, it's not specifically in a policy, but I don't know whether it would be in the regulations.
I don't think we discussed that specifically in the committee, I can share my personal view, but. I don't think, we didn't discuss that in committee, did we?
No, it's, is it in the regulations somewhere or?
No, uh.
You're saying for emergency, right?
No, uh actually, I think this is school emergency, it's what's in our our current version, it's actually the last. Statement, uh so it's a, unless the following circumstances, it's statement C. It is needed in an emergency that threatens the safety of students, staff, or other individuals. We certainly have many examples of those around around the country, unfortunately, uh but I was wondering, I that. In our new policy, that would appear, well, it would.
The challenge is, the challenge is that the word emergency is in the eyes of the beholder.
Oh, I think they'll know, but. Hold on, I'm still speaking, I it just, like, I don't see it specifically in our policy, and I'm okay with that, because we have this sort of new umbrella term, which I like. It makes it more like it's, it feels more like a policy and the regulations feel exactly like a regulations from from the schools. But what I'm asking is um in the regulations, is there any statement about that, and if not.
I don't see any.
Maybe there should be, um because this is unfortunately front and center on our minds often. Uh as students, teachers, parents, everybody, the society.
Could I respond?
So read it again real quick, Michael, and then go ahead and read.
This is just the whole policy, so you all have it, it's that last red line, and I'm not asking to add this to the policy, I just.
To the, okay, to the regulation, okay, I see it.
It's it's a, it's, it is needed in an emergency that threatens the safety of students, staff, or other individuals, to be clear. If we put, if we added it to our current policy, it wouldn't jibe with that general nature that it has.
No, yeah.
But if it could be included in the regulations, and that's a superintendent, principals matter. Uh I I think, I think it'd be helpful, because students are gonna pay attention to the cellphone policy, right? They'll read that letter by letter, um and um and so I think that that would be helpful, because it would be on many people's minds.
That's a good idea.
I don't, I don't think we could forbid the use in a true emergency. I mean, I can't imagine any student complying with such a rule in a true emergency, nor should they.
It's an affirmative statement, I think that's that's helpful in assuaging fears or.
Doesn't hurt to have it in there, no, no.
Yeah, I think so too.
You could see if there was a situation where, say, there was a fight or something, suit using their phone to contact someone else in the building. Like, it's kind of carved out that they're allowed to do stuff like that, you know, if it's gonna affect safety.
Anything else?
Andrea?
Go ahead.
Yeah, um I'm I oppose to that language, because if there's an emergency, what teacher is gonna say? what teacher is going to say, put that phone away and you're going to be punished? It's, it's ridic, it's just a ridiculous idea.
It's, it's online, mine as a parent, and when I read that, it's not in there, like, oh, what would they do?
Well, it doesn't hurt to put it in there, there's no harm in putting it in the regulations, Andrea, not in the policy. It's going to be in the regulations.
I hear you. I just thought I would say what I had to say.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
Decorum situation there, though.
All right, so all those in favor of improving policy five one three one point eight one, eight one. Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, approved nine to zero. Next one is a discussion and possible action regarding rescinding policy P four one one eight point one one two slash P five one four five point five. Prohibition of sex discrimination approved on January seventh, twenty twenty five. And reinstated policies, P four one one eight point one one two and P five one four five point five. Sexual harassment revised on January twenty fifth, twenty twenty one. Att attachments nineteen and twenty, I'm going to give it to Susan first, Matthew, so she can tell us.
You don't have, you need your second.
Uh, second, give me a second.
No, I'm not going to second it.
You're not?
Nope.
All right, second. Jen, okay.
And I know Denise, you're on. Thank you for staying around all night to explain the rescinding.
Yes, no problem. Good evening, everyone. So the, the new policy, which is titled sex discrimination and was put into effect August first, twenty twenty four, was struck down by a federal judge on July ninth, I'm sorry, on January ninth, twenty twenty four. And now that the Biden administration has come to an end without an appeal of that decision, it, it's clear that the twenty twenty four Title IX regulations will not be resurrected anytime soon, if ever. So in the absence of that, there's also been communication from the new presidential administration that has referenced the twenty twenty regulations. Those were the regulations that were in effect prior to August first. So at this time, legal counsel is recommending for all school districts that we rescind the August first, twenty twenty four policy and regulations and revert back to the prior policy and regulations that we had adopted in twenty twenty. So we are, have been in the process of communicating this to our administrators because they, in the building, are the first usually line of defense and communication when there's a complaint that comes about in their building. So we have shared the, the twenty twenty regulations and policy with them and inform them that at this time, it's very likely that the board, upon legal recommendation and the administration's recommendation, will rescind the twenty twenty four policy and re-adopt the twenty twenty policy.
All right, any? Matthew, you have something you want to say?
Good, Michael.
I just have a quick one first. So we'd be voting on rescinding and adopting, how's it? Usually we'd have first reading, second reading of four things. It's, this is quite different from that process. So I'm wondering, like, can, can we do it and why aren't we doing first reading, second reading?
Well, I believe because the twenty twenty policy and regulations have already been approved.
Yeah.
But they're no longer current. So they're no longer a policy.
Well, there's still a policy, because we didn't vote on the other policy. Did we vote on it completely? Oh, all right.
We completed our process, Jen, we said.
Yeah.
You moved us. You moved.
Got it, Ian.
Yeah, to, to, to build off of what Mike was just saying, I think due diligence and just to follow the, the process and, you know. I'd like to have this, I, I would rather see this get tabled for now and send it back to commit, the policy committee. So we can take a look at the recommendations, take a look at everything, all the documents associated with this, all the communications, and get a better handle on what it is we're being told to do. Where's, what are we being requested to do or recommended to do? Are these orders, are these recommendations, suggestions? I've not seen the documents, I've just, you know, I, I would like to be able to dive into it a little bit and understand exactly what's being communicated here.
I'm one of the board of directors and they're doing the same thing as we're doing. So I, I would guess most school districts are doing the same.
We've been advised to.
Yes.
Doing the sex, the same, same thing, rescinding, yeah.
Is that, is there a communication that says that from, like, it does issue?
Who gave the advice and on what legal authority?
So we have recommendations from both Shipman and Goodwin and Birch and Moses. And I will note that many states had filed an injunction on the new August twenty twenty four policy and regulations, so they were, you know, in many states, they were not being implemented. And at this time, we do need a policy and regulations to follow.
Well, if we don't act on this tonight, then the other policy that we approved the second reading, that's still a policy, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
And it's been, it's been vacated by a, a federal judge on January ninth. So it's been found to be unconstitutional.
So the policy we wrote that we just approved in, in January seventh or whatever date it was, is that, is that no longer valid?
Correct, that's correct.
Of, of last year, right, or no, this year?
This year. This year.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you're saying that policy is no longer valid, so as of now, we don't have a policy on sexual harassment?
That's correct, and that's why we're asking the board to re-adopt the twenty twenty regulations based on advice from our legal counsel.
So we can re-adopt and still send it back to policy to look at the old policy, if that's what the board wants to do?
So could we, if we rescind it and look it back, look back at it again, but I mean, I don't think there's any use in looking at the new one that was just done if it's been deemed unconstitutional.
Yeah, that's correct. I believe we could, we could re-adopt the twenty twenty policy and regulations. And I believe you can send any policy back to committee at any time for a review.
Okay, Matthew?
I have concerns on two different levels. First, let me talk about what I think the legal level is, and then I'll talk about a, a board administration process concern. With regard legal, it is correct that some federal judges are placed to stay on the implementation of this new policy in certain states. To my knowledge, as best as it's possible, as of a couple of days ago, this has not been a national, a national decision. That the administration is acting as if it is a national decision is certainly the administration's prerogative, but it is one that is also being challenged in court. And I personally believe that, that we are being rushing to judgment without adequate information. Having said this, and knowing that we do have two councils that have given us advice, I'm going to turn to my second concern. When you got this information, the U is administration. I am astounded that the policy committee was not advised of this, was not shared with this, and in fact, the board members never got to see what the, what the new policy looks like. You're voting on a new policy that none of us have seen here. If you look at the policies we've been given, they're the ones that are from twenty twenty one that we're being asked to adopt. I, I find the whole process very disturbing. If we are supposed to be the board, the committee that makes recommendations to the board and the administration brings things as a fait accompli without having gone through the committee, I say foul. So I would, if you want to make a motion to table this, I will second that motion.
If it hasn't gone through committees, we'd have to suspend the rule to vote on it.
Mrs. Washington.
Go ahead, let me hear Denise, go ahead Denise.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. I just want to provide to the board that we just received guidance from Bircham and Moses on Thursday, January twenty third. So this is very recent.
And I just heard this on Friday, January twenty fourth.
We could have had an email sometime in that period. I think that we have a process, we had a policy meeting on the twenty third, we could have had a process. And I'm really disturbed by this, this absence of process. I don't take it on a personal level. But what's the point of having a policy committee if things are brought to the board to be acted on without the policy having, policy committee having looked at it and without the policy that's supposed to be reenacted in front of your eyes so you can ask questions? Just on process, I'm going to go, I'm going to yield to Dean.
Actually, I'm going to point of.
Ms. Washington, can I just provide one more clarification?
Wait, 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 go ahead, no, 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 go ahead, go ahead Denise.
I, I just want to add that oftentimes, you know, oftentimes, we don't get to our emails until the evening or sometimes the next day, depending on the events of the day, so this is something that we weren't able to share with the policy committee in time because we just were unable to get to our emails in time.
Yeah, okay, so point of, my point of order is that this action would, since it has not gone to the policy committee, I thought it may have, that this action, in my interpretation of Robert's rules, is, would have to, we'd have to suspend the rules to do that, which would require a vote, and I'm, I'm not going to make that motion. But I think we'd have to make that motion to even then vote on this and, and for that matter, really discuss it. I, that's my interpretation, and that's admittedly from working on the RTM. So if, if you're, if the board of ed is different, please let me know, but that's just my feeling. Yeah.
Dean?
I was going to say, this is, and Jay is with me on this one, this is another example of how, why we should not parrot or mimic legal language, whether it's statutes or regulations, state or federal, too closely because that, some of those statutes and regulations are shifting sands, some areas more than others. And I understand if we adopted policies, a policy that said, with respect to sexual harassment, let's just follow federal law, so everyone now has to go turn to the, you know, federal law to find out that it's, it's easier to have it all kind of spelled out, okay? So you don't have to go hunting around in federal law to find out what the policy is. But it is a risk you take that when you follow too closely, every time there's a shift at the national level or at the state level, you now have to go back to the policy committee, you know, tweak your language or maybe wholesale adopt new language. That's the danger in, in having something so specific and so tied to previous legislation. I am confused on one point, and that is we're being asked to go back to our policy of twenty twenty one, in other words, up until January seventh, what we were given was our policy. So what we're, what, the complaint I'm hearing is that the, that the January, the policy adopted January seventh didn't go through the policy committee?
It did.
Okay, it did. So, and I presume the one that was adopted in twenty twenty one went through the policy committee.
But it's no longer the policy. It has no standing, no longer the policy.
Well, well, apparently, if in fact the federal government's correct, we have a policy, it just won't meet.
No, no, the twenty twenty one is no longer a policy.
Exactly, it does not exist.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, the language was previously in there. So while it's technically not our policy anymore, it's not correct to say that we've never seen it before. It's, it's in our book.
It's okay because online, it's still the old one. Well, it takes a couple of weeks to get something like that out, but.
So is it the will of the board to postpone this motion until it goes back to policy and then comes back to the board? Is that the will of the board?
We don't know that our next policy meeting, we're taking it, we have some agenda items that had to do with the budget that are going to come first.
Okay, well, it's up to you, I'm just saying, go ahead.
Okay, so pending the final resolution at whatever level, okay? Pending the final resolution of this question of whatever level, if action is taken under the policy that we adopted on January seventh, and it turns out that that policy is, say, unlawful, then do we have a potential lawsuit on our hands by whoever the losing party might be? Let's say somebody was, was disciplined under the policy, but under the new policy, but wouldn't have been disciplined under the old policy. Frame it in general terms like that. It turns out that, at the end of the day, our new policy is unlawful and was unlawful as, as of the time of its adoption, then what do we have? We have somebody who was what, wrongfully disciplined?
I think not, because everything that was, was precluded under the old policy is also precluded in the current policy. They just added another layer of, another layer of protection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking generally without having the two texts in front of me because I wasn't at the January seventh meeting.
Let me ask Denise a question. Denise, if we don't do anything tonight, can we use the policy that we approved on January seventh? And if not, does that mean we have no policy at all for sexual harassment?
Well, I, I will read to you from Bircham and Moses. Their recommendation, their summary is that a federal judge in Kentucky declared the U S Department of Education's twenty twenty four Title IX final, final rule fatally tainted and struck down the rule in its entirety with nationwide effect. The decision states that, that the Department of Education exceeded its statutory authority in interpreting Title IX, that the final rule violates the Constitution in multiple respects, and that the final rule is arbitrary and compresious in its interpretation of Title IX. That is why it is recommended that we revoke that policy and re-adopt the twenty twenty policy and guidelines.
Does that mean, wait a second, Ian, does that mean, tell me now, does that mean we don't have a policy if we don't rescind this, the, the new one?
Oh, we've got one, I can answer that for sure.
Well, it, it means we would have a policy that has been declared unconstitutional. And I think Dean has a point. I think we would be, we would be, you know, at risk of implementing it if there were, you know, potentially any pushback.
My authority to privilege.
Go ahead.
Can we have all communications ever sent regarding this change from any attorney, any office forwarded to us now?
Can you send that to us by email tomorrow, Denise?
How about now?
Absolutely.
I have it right here.
Yeah, but.
We have phones, like, I just want to read it. Repentable, like, I want to read mine.
What do you all want to do? It's getting late, do you want to postpone this policy?
I'm not, I'm personally not comfortable making any choices when I'm not.
Okay, so then we could postpone it and do it then.
The attorneys, we don't have any communications.
Okay, all right, I hear you, I hear you.
Do we have any, do we have any case, do we have any, do we have any complaints now that would fit under the provisions of the current policy that we want to excise?
Ask Denise.
I am. Do we have any complaints that are current?
We do not right now, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't get one tomorrow or the day after.
Good, then I'm willing to roll the dice and say if we get the stuff today and call a special meeting for next week, we can deal with it.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want to say we need to suspend the rules to vote on this. If we don't, the vote would be, you know, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be approving a new policy anyway. That's my interpretation. So if, if we are going to vote on it tonight, suspend the rules and vote on that. I would not support that, but that's, that'd be the way to.
Adrian.
Yeah, so my thought is, is, obviously, I feel pretty rushed on this, it, it sounds like everyone else. And the twenty twenty one policy, it, you correct me, but you did a lot of small changes in language that probably is constitutional. And they were good changes, I believe, with, with. Um, and they were good changes, um, I believe with, with just some of the, you know, the way we refer to people and specific people and things like that. Am I correct in that, that there was a lot of massaging? And I, I guess where I'm going is I would rather not just go back to an old policy that may be flawed also. I'd like to make sure that if we have to change something from the new policy, we make sure that what we're changing to is, you know, the latest and greatest to where, you know.
My recollection is that we did do some changes. Denise, are you in agreement that we made some changes?
Yeah, there were, there are some pretty substantive changes to the new twenty twenty four regulations, which is why there has been an injunction in several states that's um, barred the implementation of the policy um, in several states that, that have the injunction in place. Connecticut was not one of them.
So what we can do is vote on this, vote on this motion. It could fail, then the motion fails, right?
I think you need to suspend the rules to vote on it because it hasn't gone to committee. That's my interpretation, but I might be alone on that. I'm new to the board.
I, I agree.
Okay. So you want to make, go ahead. Make the motion.
Oh, I'm not making that motion. I don't support suspending the rules. But uh, but uh, you know, I think we need to do that. Otherwise, the vote wouldn't count. Uh, unless I'm wrong on this and I could be. So.
You procedurally, you're correct. I think the board can do what it likes. So I'm just saying, without referring.
Anyone else can make.
Well, we could make the motion and the motion's already on the floor. We just vote and it doesn't pass if you, if nobody votes for it.
Well, definitely, you did throw in the order.
Yeah.
You know, on, on the motion on the board.
I, I mean, I could be way off on this. I mean, I'm just a volunteer from the RTM and, and now on the Board of Ed.
Volunteer from my house.
And exactly, but so I don't know every point of Roberts rules, but I just, I just know that in that body, we'd, we'd have to bring it to committee first. If not, we'd have to suspend the rules. So actually, in my interpretation, the motion itself right now is out of order.
Okay. Jay, what do you have to say? You know anything about this, Jay? Roberts rules?
Uh, well, uh, tonight's meeting was posted as a special meeting. And I think uh, Dean might have an opinion on whether you can even suspend the rules on a special meeting. I thought that was only in a regular meeting.
Ian, stop. So what do you think Dean? You're a parliamentarian.
No, am I really?
Didn't we vote for you to be that?
No. Maybe not, and I would have turned it down. Um. So yeah, it's true, this is a special meeting, but I think even, and I have to refer to the statute, look up whatever it is. I think, I think if enough of us vote, we could still add something to the agenda. I think the really egregious fences are where you meet under the rubric of, under the title of a special meeting and then add substantive matters. That's where the public has a right to say, wait a minute, we didn't know you were going to discuss that. If we knew, we would have been there with pitchforks and torches.
Hmm.
What we would be doing um, is not adding anything substantive. We're adding something procedural. Clearly, we have advertised that we were going to be discussing this matter. We're talking about procedurally getting around what is a, what is a perceived uh, flaw. On that question, um, I'm not understanding. I don't believe that Roberts prohibits you. We are the Board of Education, wearing that hat tonight. Uh, it may be that we have adopted rules, and I got to go back to the big fat rulebook, the nine hun, the nine thousand section. It may be that we adopted a rule that says we must follow this procedure, and if we don't, then we're out, you know, then we're out of bounds. You could do that. Roberts isn't the be all, end all. And I don't think Roberts itself says that we're not allowed to read this unless it's first gone to one of our subcommittees. That's why I said, that's why I said we could do what we like. We're the board. If we wanted to vote on this, we could vote on it. If we don't want to vote on it, then let's not vote on it. Let it loo, let it, whatever. Uh, we, by maybe, now that I have the, the mic, I don't know what the differences are between what was adopted on January seventh and our twenty twenty one policy. It may be while we're talking about risks, that the bulk of what we have as a policy, you know, the old one or the new one that was adopted, the one that we have now, the only one we have technically, is inoffensive. And what's really being discussed is language in the corner somewhere. Perhaps language that we will never have to run across in our district. I don't know. So if we're thinking about risk, maybe it's a much smaller risk than we're thinking. In other words, not every sexual harassment complaint and a determination is going to fall within the, within the, uh, the, the ambit of, uh, you know, the, the claimed unconstitutionality. And maybe that most of our current policy as adopted on January seventh is perfectly fine and will be fine in a situation like that, for what that's worth. But I, you know, if, if you've, you've got the, you've got this screen up, I don't know what you're looking at. Maybe you could look up what, one of our, one of our rules. Because I, like I said, if one of our rules says, no, this must go this route, then if we're outside that policy, that policy that we've adopted for our procedures, then let's go outside, then we're outside. But if we don't have a policy that says this must first go, if it's just the procedure, this is what we do, and we like to have first readings, the second readings and all of that. That's what we do. But it's not necessarily uh, an illegal motion to have it on here.
Jay, do we have a policy that says um, all, all motions have to go through committee?
Uh, we have a, we have a policy that says there has to be a first and second reading.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Now, does um, rescinding due to a court order, is that a different animal? Um, you know, we have received uh, an indication from the attorney, but I'll point out that these changes took place over a year ago and we were going under the twenty twenty one rules until January seventh. So um, if people are uncomfortable with voting on this tonight, um, I'm, I'm actually with uh, the idea that you know, we take a, a little extra time, but I basically the, the policies that are promulgated here are unenforceable anyway if a judge has struck them down. So the government isn't waiting to see what we're going to do. There, that, those, those have already moved.
So Jen.
So what's the issue with voting back in the policy from twenty twenty one, then sending it to policy to put back in some of the language that was tweaked that is not in violation? So why, why can't we do that? Like what's, I mean, that's, to me, it's like a simple answer and I don't, I don't understand like why we're holding on to something that we know or got advice on from two different legal firms stating that, hey, you're now, your, your policy that you just put in place is now like um, in violation. So why are we holding on to something? Um, if we clearly know that it could expose the district, uh, that's my question.
I don't think the board got those opinions though.
Yeah, we haven't seen them.
I mean, I don't doubt that they're there, but.
Well, Denise, you didn't receive them, but Denise just read you the opinion. But you didn't physically receive them. I get that. I get.
Yeah.
I get that.
The board didn't get it.
I can, I can, I can, I'm okay with as long as the policy committee gets it, right? So um, if you guys didn't get it, okay, then you guys can have issues. But as for me, as like other, another board member, I um, you know, like we have, like as long as you guys get it, um, all of us don't need to be cooks and, you know, um, being involved in everything.
Well, I think there's another dimension to this, and it's one with which I'm uncomfortable because it can produce conflict, which I really don't like. But it's been made very clear to me that there's a division of labor, operations and policy, and the board is not supposed to get involved in operations. And the administration is not supposed to get involved in policy. And this has been a matter of some
Where they have, they do get involved with policy because they have to help us with.
No, 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 but, but there has, there have been a number of occasions where there's been some discord because there have been differences of feeling as to whether an administration acting, saying that it's a matter of operations, and then the board saying it was a matter of policy. That's not the case here. This is a policy issue. And if we I, I don't have any problem with the content of, of, of what we had before. I have a problem with the process and I really, there are not many hills I'm prepared to die on, Susan, but this is one. This, this administration has got to treat the board as the board. And when there's a matter of policy, I agree with Denise. She probably couldn't have gotten the information to us on Thursday. But she could have sent an email, they could have made a phone call, they could have left a message, and we all check our email at least once a day. And.
Yeah, Matthew, Matthew.
Oversight, but it's a structurally important oversight, and I want to call it this time.
Okay. Yeah, Matthew, if I could just clarify, I believe you were emailed on Friday.
Um, by whom?
Uh, by Susan and Joyce and I before we added this to the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Uh, I have no reason to doubt, to doubt you're telling me what you believe to be true, but I have no recollection of having received that. I'll check it when I get home.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did see something from Bircham and Moses that they sent down.
Yeah, we, we would have never bypassed you as the chairman of the policy committee.
All right. So what do you want to do? Um.
I'm just exhausted.
Okay. So what do you want to do? That doesn't move us forward. You're being exhausted.
I'm, I'm personally confused as to why, like, the chair of the policy committee would receive the information but not.
Okay. Well, let's not drag on that. What do you want to do to move us forward? Let, what do you want to do to move us forward? We can argue about what the administration didn't do, but that's not moving us forward right now. I think they heard that loud and clear.
I, I would like to suggest that given that every other everything that was covered in the existing policy except for the quote offensive piece that the judge in Kentucky eliminated is, is in the new policy. That the chance of somebody coming up in the next seven or eight days with a complaint under the provisions of the Biden administration is mathematically possible but functionally close to nil. Given that, I would say it should come back to the policy committee and we can meet as early as the members are willing to get together.
Exactly.
So why couldn't we just table it and bring it back to policy?
That's what we, okay, we'll table it, bring it back to policy.
What's the difference? Jay, Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out, um, to, you know, th- there's been some pretty strong language used tonight. And I really think we've crossed the line on decorum. If somebody would just read their board notes, it says right there that Title Nine was rolled back due to the rescinded court case on January ninth, twenty twenty four. It was all given to us on Friday. The entire board was emailed.
I appreciate it.
I said, I got it. I said, I got it.
Attorney were not provided.
On January tenth, Pullman or Conley
Everything.
Sent an email uh, about the same thing. So I, I just want to um, say that uh, I, I don't see where we were left out.
Yeah. Thank you, Jay, because I got the information too. So you, I don't know if you guys are reading your board notes or not, but whatever. Um, anyway, we're stuck here. It's almost ten o'clock.
It's late. I have to be up early.
Jay, Jay, you still there?
Yes.
Or maybe, you know, um, being tabled. When I was at Learn, a board chair said, if you table, you just table on it for later on in the meeting. So you really shouldn't table things, you should postpone.
Yeah. We say, we use the, we use the phrase table, we use that very loosely.
Yeah, that's what he said.
People say that as a way of saying, let's deal with it later. Really means to postpone.
Postpone. That's what, that's what the board chair.
We postpone to time definite, but in, in this case, and I may be wrong in this, um, if, if this very motion was out of order because it didn't go to first, um, to committee first and we didn't suspend the rules, um, a way out of that would be um, for the person who um, put this motion on the floor to um, you know, retract, withdraw that motion and then the second to agree. Um, because what I'm concerned is we're postponing to time definite, uh, a motion that's um, inherently out of order unless the suspended rules.
All right. I'll, I'll be, to move it along, I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
One second, right? So.
Yeah. Okay. So now we're postponing it to your next policy meeting and then you'll take it up. Okay?
Oh, yes. So, so I like, I like Mike's way, which is, which is clean, which is it never happened.
And, and then you read.
Oh, yeah.
And then you get to refer to the policy.
Okay, I'll refer this to policy.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll refer um, uh, to rescind policy four, one, one, eight point, one, one, two slash P five, one, four, five point five, back to uh, the policy committee.
Okay.
And I'd like to thank Denise for hanging out with us this long to be able to explain this because it is very complicated. And um, I'm surprised that I didn't put the Bircham and Moses linked to my board notes because I'm usually that thorough, so. I can get it to you though.
We did just receive it.
You're welcome. Yeah, I just sent both of them to the board notes. And I copied you, Susan. Yep.
And thank you, Jay, for talking about decorum because um, we have to watch how we speak to staff members, and that's all I'm going to say about that. Um, number ten, discussion and possible action. Nope, nope. Number nine. Uh, to rec, I'll read the motion. To recognize February the third, twenty twenty five through February the seventh, twenty twenty five, a school counselor appreciation week, and to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to school counselors.
Happy to do it.
Do I have a second, Adrian? Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine to zero to zero.
I think all the counselors have been waiting for this.
Okay. Uh, number ten is discussion and possible action regarding conducting a public hearing on February the tenth. Um, because we already have public comments on, when did we have those public comments?
One second.
Uh, not yet. We have public comments when?
Last week.
Last week? So that's why this is on the agenda. So here we go. To conduct a public hearing on the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget on February the tenth, that's the motion. I do. That's that.
Okay.
Second it, okay. So again, do we still want to have a public hearing on February the tenth? Mike, yes or no?
I'd be okay with it, yeah. I mean, if we, I want a hearing.
Okay.
Are we discussing or voting?
Uh, I'm just going around making this quick. Matthew?
Yep.
Okay. Jen?
Yes.
Okay. Adrian?
Yes.
Ian, now you could discuss it on your yes or whatever you want to say.
Definitely, yeah. I would also, I just was unclear, are we doing the joint session with the town council on tonight or no?
Not on February the tenth.
No, I think we were.
They were talking about February the eleventh, but we were going to talk with them to see if they really wanted to do that. I was going to talk with Rachel and find out about that. Because it's supposed to be February eleventh on their day, on their day.
This historically usually like that. I, I know that's what's usually been done in the past. It's usually it's the Board of Ed, RTM, Education Committee, General Counsel.
Yeah.
It's a public hearing.
So you can pencil in your calendars for February the eleventh for um.
So we just changed date or?
That be a.
They changed the date.
Would that be a town council meeting?
Yeah, that'd be a town council meeting. So they're inviting us to their meeting. Um, you're done, Ian?
With qualifications or not? With conditions?
No, no conditions.
Okay. You're welcome. Sounds good.
So Dean, it's not our meeting at all?
It's their meeting. We're invited to their meeting.
That is what?
That's how it's always been. We always went to their meeting. Remember you came last year. You talked about field trips.
That was the joint meeting.
Yeah, and that's what this is.
But, but I thought you were talking about the public hearing.
No, he started talking about the joint meeting. I was talking about public hearing.
That joint meeting, um, we all.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold, hold tight, hold tight. Hold tight. We're on public hearing.
Okay.
All right. I let Ian get off track. And so let's stick with the public hearing.
I'm just, and I was asking for clarity's sake because historically the, the public hearing in February has been held with three bodies together and each body's convened their own meeting and then it was held at five fifty five.
Yep. That's always how it was done.
So this is a change. That's all I'm trying to. So this is a change. That's all I'm trying to identify is if we're going to do it on a Monday, February tenth, and we're holding it by ourselves, that's a change.
The liaison meeting was this was really, it used to be a very low key meeting. We would meet at the annex and it was posted always by the board.
Look at you.
But each each one opened up, as Ian said, their own meeting. So it was like a.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we were all together, right?
Wasn't like part of somebody else's meeting.
Right, right, right. But my thing is we're going to them. We're going at their it's we're going to the town council's headquarters, I'll say. They're not coming to us to our meetings. You know what I mean?
Right. I think it's been at the town.
Yeah.
Hall Annex before. It's also been at Thrive fifty five before to home. And it's usually followed by somebody else's other meeting, whether we did a public meeting after that or they did something else after that and we left. I don't know.
Dean.
Okay, so if we if we go to the town council's meeting on the eleventh, say we're invited and we go. We're not actually done yet. We haven't adopted our budget.
No.
No.
Right, so we're in no position to actually competently answer questions. We can sit there and we can have a whole session. But we are going to be at their meeting. And uh so what would be the purpose of going? Oh, we say howdy.
That's my thought. Right.
Right, so.
And we have a budget to work on. So all of these things that we're doing are adding to, you know.
The date looking at the the motion on the floor is for February tenth.
Yeah.
And that's a Monday and that's.
That's a public hearing.
So I I just want to identify that that's that's a change. That's us doing our own thing.
Right.
And it's not going to be that joint session.
No, no.
Some people in the committee may remember.
No.
So that's fine. I'm in favor of doing our own public hearing. And uh and carrying on with February tenth and that'll be here or Thrive fifty five?
Here.
Here.
We only got two people last night for public comments.
Oh, it wasn't really much notice. We didn't have much time to get the word out.
You gotta get the word out. Okay, well.
Well, now it's a public here.
Yeah.
Did we would we have a hearing last year? Like, did do we actually have a public hearing on the budget for for the education part?
We always do a real successful public hearing with the council. Once you have your budget, that's really when people come out. Once that we have the budget and we're explaining it to the town council, that's when people really come out in the public hearing.
But but a hearing is a separate thing. Like I uh so I'm trying to think, is there has there been a specific hearing for the Board of Education part of the budget? Was there one last year? I don't know.
Did you have one last year?
Let's try and find out.
I could say my years passed. We did have a public hearing um for the Board of Education budget separately than the town council.
No, because I.
Something happened.
The only meeting we had was the one with town council, us and our TM.
Mm hmm. And the joint.
Education.
Joint one. And then there was one later on when.
That one always happens with the council.
With the council.
Yeah.
I don't think our our TM were um members were present, but they were not part of the meeting. So those were the only two that I remember at Thrive fifty five last year.
At Thrive fifty five, the Education Committee for the RTM uh held a meeting. Uh, and so we I did roll call, voted in, and we adjourned Board of Education to the same thing, Town Council did the same thing. So it's like a try, a try meeting. Um, but I don't think I can. I don't think we had a budget hearing part for that. On on that meeting. I don't I don't remember that part.
It was scheduled, right? And it just never happened.
I'm a bit confused. At what date are we expecting to have these these superintendent's budget or take possession of the superintendent's budget and make it ours? Because I would think that that's the point at which we would want to have the public hearing and the public can ask us questions or when we have our budget in front of us. While it's still the superintendent's budget, it seems.
You have to vote by the end of February so it can be sent to John Burke.
Yeah.
So you have to vote on it officially to your budget.
So we have a budget meeting tomorrow, town obligations and health insurance. And then on Monday, February the third, we have a budget work session. I I don't know what's left. What's what's going to be left, Susan, for you to go over?
After that, we have um still some things for the Board of Ed and for the Superintendent's Office. Um, we have some other things that are special services, like social workers and those kind of pieces.
So when do you think you'll be finished? February the third, the tenth, the twelfth? How's that? What you said?
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know what you saw.
So I would say that we can probably wrap it up on the third.
Oh, okay.
Finish either, yeah, unless we needed more time after the public hearing. But I mean, we're going to do tech two on Tuesday, technology for Clint.
Okay. Okay, so you're thinking that on February the third, you said you're going to be done?
Well, I have to go. It's going to be a long night because it's going to be wrapping up anything leftover.
Okay.
So then when my understanding that when we go to the meeting on the eleventh with the town council, that Susan will be making a presentation on what she has presented to us as amended up to that point, which then becomes ours?
Well, I don't know if you're going to have time. You're going to take some time to do the amending, I would think.
Yeah, you got, yeah.
Time.
Yeah, we're going to have to look at what our budget is and then it becomes our budget, then we start looking at it and making whatever we're going to do with it.
So if a citizen says.
Wait, Jen, Jen was before you.
Sorry. Sorry, buddy. Um, I think it was on Wednesday, the twenty second or um that meeting. I was forcing this issue. Remember I was saying like you're dropping it in the mailbox. It's done. We can't keep going. We, the board, um, need to take over the budget and start being able to look at it. And if it is identified that Susan needs to make changes, we will make changes as we are going through and reviewing it ourselves. We keep prolonging this. We are going to come back that we, the board, will only have two weeks and I don't want that to happen. When we left that meeting and maybe I need to watch the video again, but I thought the twenty eighth was going to be the last day of presentations and it's going to be our starting the third to do as we please. That's what I.
The twenty eighth?
I mean, I'll get through what I said, but there'll be other things that you haven't seen that we haven't reviewed together.
So you want the twenty eighth to be the drop dead date?
Well, I never said that that.
No, no.
But that's how I understood it.
Okay.
Um, so it's Susan's. I was trying to force it to be done that night. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Susan's reviewing it and presenting it, but she wasn't going to make changes going forward, whatever was presented and reviewed unless it was like a gross mistake, right? Um, which we may think there is. We definitely know the FTE counts have to be fixed and now it looks like the line item. I would um demand that the line item budget that we compare to ties to the budget book that was approved regardless.
FTE has been reviewed and we can review it back with you. So we.
No, the FTEs Mike identified were in error.
He said they were.
They're basically twenty twenty three.
Yeah, the the and it's just been posted. I I think you just posted maybe today, the proposed superintendent's budget. That still has that whole line of any FTE chart is still from the I think I looked at it just a couple uh from the twenty uh three, twenty, oh, wait. Yes, twenty three, twenty four budget instead of the twenty four, twenty five. Uh, I noticed just looking at that green tab, uh, the total number of of personnel is different from the the second version we got or the third version we got that's different from the second. So those are still in that's a new thing that's in flux from what what we've had before. And I didn't look at the other sections, but.
So even more reason that we're going to have to take the third to go through some of these things.
May need to have another meeting that week so we can get started on our budget.
Are are we gonna are we okay with having the the hearing that I'm still I'm still a little lost like? So are we good with the hearing on the tenth? Because there's a contention on having.
They're saying that I'm not I'm not comfortable having the meeting on the tenth.
Yeah.
If the meet, if we don't have the superintendent's budget final in our hands and have had it for a good couple of days to start working with it ourselves. You know, we need to have the full document comprehensive, cohesively, complete from the superintendent's office here and we're going through it. Start making our changes. That's when we take in public input again and we can make our own judgments.
And I think, yeah, that's a good point. And I think there's a longer lead time on on setting up a hearing, which is why we're talking about now.
Hmm.
Um, but is there a longer lead time and it canceling it?
I'm just saying, like, I I I'm with Jen. We need a deadline. Deadlines are liberty. Deadlines end things like so we need a deadline when we can expect this document to be done.
Did you say February the third?
And and whether we review.
I'm just talking about reviewing the document. I have a complete book. You should all have a complete book.
We got it in pieces and I'm not sure what's what.
It's like what?
Well, you can always.
Great to have like one that's done and all the way through, like this is the final version because we've gotten.
Well, Joyce, the team has spent a lot of time getting you the function codes and now the beginning of the book. And I think there were directions on how to put it together, but if you need help, I can help you.
Do we have one full thing?
Bring your stuff in and I'll help you, Ian. Bring your stuff in. Give him the stuff. That old?
This is all the versions I've received.
Now, the all the new stuff.
This is everything that I was given that I think is.
Okay, give it in.
And then this is the stuff that was handed out in the past.
Uh, more shit. It's not your meeting, so.
I would like to have just one simple binder.
Okay, give it in, give it in, give it in, give it in, give it in.
I don't want to take his binder. We'll get you.
I got my notes in here. I've been saving all my drafts. You know, but like I have all my drafts in here.
I have a clean book.
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. We're talking about public hearing. Let's get done with the public hearing and not go through. You're unhappy with your your book here. Okay, let's go back to public hearing.
May I propose for consideration that we.
Not you're unhappy with your book.
May we? I propose we add another meeting in the week of February third. We conclude our uh we conclude all of our review with the superintendent by the third. And then on the fourth or fifth or whatever date that week, we start a review of our internal board review of the document. And any time after that is when we can have the public hearing, when it's our budget and we can get input.
So you want to have a meeting when on Wednesday?
We only have one meeting scheduled for the week of the third and I'm suggesting pick any other day. I'm good.
No, you don't. Are you with something else you do?
Well, we have the PTO meetings.
My birthday and my son's.
Yeah, on the fourth.
What's your birthday?
Yeah. And that's.
Five, six, and the seventh.
And the fifth, we have the joint vote, don't.
Okay, I'm going to do the fifth. Okay, February the fifth will be our final budget meeting with Susan. And then the then after that it's ours. Okay. Your Wednesday, February the fifth. You got that, Mike?
That's the final superintendent budget meeting.
Right, the final superintendent budget meeting.
And then when would we get the budget? The superintendent's budget?
You already have it.
We, oh, okay, so the budget version that we have, um, it's it's really it go it it doesn't help the budget process because um the the numbers we're comparing to in the FTE charts are not for this current year. Uh, and then the numbers in all the spreadsheets, those function codes we've been going through. Um, they're going against something that's not the FY twenty five adopted budget. And so all those percent changes, uh, the increases, decreases of FTEs. You you can't you can't get anything from that. And how where's the public confidence going to be in that as it as it transitions? And those are clearing errors that I agree are just mistakes. Uh, well, maybe not the adopted versus the um, the current budget years that I don't understand what happened there. But it's it's not a very useful document as is. And what's put online is different. What was put online tonight is different from what I have, at least in that green tab. So maybe I missed an extra handout in all the um the FTEs. Uh, but it is different and that was different from the one before. And that's kind of central because it says, well, this is the staffing. Uh, have we added teachers, removed teachers, added aides, removed aides? Um, that's vital importance and it's different from what we've seen. So um, what I see is for the superintendent's uh budget that we've got is a rough draft, um, a repeat with errors that should be corrected.
Yeah, you're not going to correct the budget then, things that we brought up.
Well, that's what Ray was saying that he'd need time to do.
No, not not this year. But we have a budget book that's adopted, that's online. It's on our own website. It has all the numbers.
For twenty twenty five.
For twenty twenty five. That is not currently reflected in our function code breakdown that we have been going through for a couple of nights and will continue to. Therefore, all the percent changes are off. Um, I think it's a separate document, as you've explained before. It's not an Excel sheet. Um, maybe it's a Word document that has all the FTE charts. Those, as of the last meeting we had, I think it was pointed out quite clearly and accepted um that uh the column there is what's saying it's twenty 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 five budget is really just from the last time the document was worked up, it's from twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And that's what the all the changes in do we add a teacher, remove a teacher, add aides, remove aides? Uh, so in math, this would be called this. This is a basis set uh which we're comparing to. And um what you have is a basis set that's uh that in the document, that's not what we should be comparing to. And not what it says it is either. So I've got a big problem and it really makes it hard um to make strategic moves about the budget.
Yeah.
Um and so so that's that's what I have to say.
So nonetheless, the the budget book and what you have on paper matches. That's going to be a problem. That's the short end of it.
So.
So.
So if we finish the superintendent's budget on the fifth with all the corrections, Susan would then only have roughly two days till Friday to get everything uh in a final, complete version to make all the corrections or the comments that we make in the last section. I think that's doable, though it won't be fun. What do you think?
Well, I've made made things happen so far, haven't I? Without the help that we needed.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So Dean, did you have something?
It's just been put in mind as something we came up with in high school. When you do your exercises and you check the answers in the back of the book, if your answers don't match the book's exercise, the book's answers. We multiply by something we came up with. It's called the variable constant. You multiply your answers by whatever number you needed to to get the.
Oh, God, oh, forget it. Okay. I don't know how. Okay, since we clearly know that like what we're comparing our budget to the proposed is wrong, right? Can we just cancel tomorrow's meeting? Because why waste our time? And then let Susan and her team do whatever they have to do tomorrow night? Fix it. And so we have something good to look at because to be honest with you, I don't like wasting my time. Time is valuable. Time you can't get back and I don't want to look at something where I know the numbers are wrong and I'm thinking like, oh, yeah, it's an increase, it's a decrease, but in reality, it's neither. So and to be honest with you, I'm sorry, I'm getting things because I probably like.
Well, Susan said she'd be happy with that if if the board agrees to that.
Are we going to replace it with a meeting?
We could replace it with another meeting.
We did. That's what we added.
We just added one.
Yeah, we just added one February fifth.
Excuse me, Beverly.
To be.
Go ahead, Joan.
Um, I'm trying to follow these meetings that you want to have. I have to know.
Okay, the the one meeting that we have added so far is Wednesday, January, no, Wednesday, February the fifth.
And you drop in the third.
No, we're keeping the third.
Okay, so it's two that week.
Yeah, two that week. We're dropping the twenty eighth. Yeah. We're discussing now about dropping the twenty eighth, but we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
If we drop the twenty eighth, would it make any sense to have something on the thirtieth that would give Susan two days to get it together? And then we'd have an intact book. We wouldn't have lost the meeting time and we'll be ready to rock.
Yes.
I don't know. I'd be.
I don't know if I'd be able to do the thirtieth.
Yeah. I don't know either. Yeah, I don't know either.
Well, why don't we plan it and if you can't do it, we'll have to cancel.
Now, now, let's, let her look and see now.
What is that?
Uh, nothing's been decided, Joan, we're still struggling.
Okay, I see that everything's contingent, right? But we're still on the, the public hearing item.
Exactly.
And so, so we'll just, when we come back to advanced planning, they'll say um, add or subtract the meetings we agreed on here. I mean, like, I don't have to do this in a, a different part, but I, I see we can decide it now, but.
All right, so you still wanna have the public hearing on February tenth? We have a motion on the floor and we have it. I made the motion, Jen seconded, all those in favor having the public hearing on February the tenth, say aye.
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 Thank you, Jay. Andrea?
Aye.
Okay, so it passed nine to zero to zero. Okay, done with that. Information and proposals, um, this is the part where you get letters, communication and comments by board members. On meeting items and other items in their jurisdiction. I'll start with you, Adrian.
All right, um. We. And seeing, we've seen lots of communications, uh, the uh, school safety and threats and, and communication of that. Um, I know that our superintendent, these things, um, has much information as she can. Um, I have my own, you know, frustrations with that also, learning things in the day. But um, I understand that that's the way the process, I, I guess, has to work. Um, and um, I do think that we should talk about how that happens, at least so the board knows what to expect. More specifically, I, I would personally like that. Um, I think everybody probably received a letter on chronic absenteeism. Um, and um, they, I don't know, speaking for everybody, but um, I know that that's um, a forefront that we're, we're concerned of. Um, and then um, another personal opinion is just that we had a budget task force that did a lot of work. Um, and they spent a lot of time in the middle of the summer. When I was doing other things, I would occasionally tune into meetings. Um, and I appreciate the work of that budget task force. I'm a little disappointed that it hasn't really turned into. Um, like a lot of the recommendations haven't really made it into policy and haven't. Um, you know, there was lots of hopes that, that this budget process would be different. Um, but it, 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 um, it doesn't seem to be um, substantially improved. I guess would be the best way of saying it, um, from last year. Um, so I, I would love to see um, some of those things get, some of those um, policies get passed as quickly as possible. All right, thank you.
Jen?
You coming?
Matthew? Mike?
Yeah, um, well, I've been to a number, had the pleasure of being at a number of um, uh, concerts and, and sporting events since our last meeting. Um, actually someone who was in attendance uh, from a, at the last weekend from another school district uh, re- remarked. Um, cuz I, I told them who was watching it too, and there are athletic directors there and our, our principal was there. And, and uh, she said that it's just, it's wonderful to, to see them at these events. And I said, well, they're at everything, it's very dedicated administration. Um, and then uh, just for comments on uh, meeting items, I know it's coming up in advanced planning. Um, when we had our last public hearing or public, or maybe it's a public comment on the budget. We added in, um, we had an agenda item that was for um, budget discussion after our budget work session. I understand a, a hearing is a meeting onto itself, but I would suggest that we add a, a budget work session meeting. Um, right after um, the hearing, uh, cuz we'll be here assembled and if it is shorter. Uh, then we can take advantage of that time. And, and we know we're free that night, uh, because we could get a lot of comments, so I think that might be a good idea um, to do. Thank you.
I think that's right.
Great idea.
Yeah. On the tenth, right?
Special meeting on the budget?
It'd have to be a separate meeting cuz of the, the hearing is its own thing though.
Hmm. Yeah, on the tenth, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it, it says Board of Education special meeting on budget too.
Do we have that?
Yeah, it says public hearing and then slash Board of Ed special meeting on budget.
There's the question marks, I think this causes me concern.
There's no question mark on the sheet.
Oh, I'm seeing, I'm looking at the agenda.
Um.
One that went out.
Yeah.
Oh, that's only because um, yeah, but it still says special meeting on the budget, so we would still have a meeting. We just wouldn't have the budget, we just wouldn't have the public hearing. But now we voted to have the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we still have that special meeting on the budget.
Okay, it's just different from, so our, our agenda for tonight's meeting has the calendar. And a February tenth that just has special um, dash public hearing, rebudget. Is, is that, does that mean there's a special meeting and a public hearing already, is that what, maybe I just read it wrong?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
So, so we're gonna have both, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, that's not right.
From the location.
And it's at five fifty-five, it's gonna be right here, right? Yeah, so they'll correct that. So it should say public hearing. Slash or and Board of Education.
With special meeting.
Special meeting on the budget. And it should be right here at Central Office.
Okay, great.
Okay. I, I was looking at the other sheet, Mike, I was looking at uh, this calendar that we have here.
Oh, that's from like a Friday or so?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was looking at this. Anything else, Mike?
Nothing.
No. Um, Dean?
What he said?
Well, who said? What did he say?
I'm gonna say.
You ready?
No, I'm, I wanna see if he knows.
Just talking about the, I'm talking about the, the budget committee, the ad hoc budget committee.
Hmm.
Disappointment in uh, a lot of the recommendations were not implemented, hope something will be done about it.
Hmm.
Yeah, just a bit ready.
Okay.
I'm watching my.
Are you all done, Dean?
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate Adrian's comments and, and Dean's comments. Um, I had prepared some comments uh, very similar to that. Um, as chair of the ad hoc budget procedure committee. I am uh, greatly disappointed with the way this budget has been rolled out so far. A number of the recommendations that my colleagues, uh, Mike and Jen uh, uh, all collaborated uh, with me on um. You know, we had a sort of a very specific idea of rollout that would have given a lot of time. Um, but it all was contingent on having a finished uh, superintendent's proposed budget. By uh, early January at the latest, but uh, ideally before the holidays. So that we would have had the holidays to intake that budget on our own time. And then come back in January, ready to go, ready into work sessions. Um, again, like the presentation model and the review model. Um, personally, just speaking for myself, not the committee. Um, I feel like it, it just kinda drags on, um, it doesn't really get us where we need to go. Um, you know, I feel in some ways like, you know, we're finding typos and errors and things. And we're, in some ways, we're kinda doing the business office's job for them. Um, I'd rather just get to a point where we have just a clean draft that is all comprehensive, all cohesive. And complete into itself, and that's the handed in homework that then we review. We're in consultation to ask questions from the administration. But to go through pages by pages and having changes made in the presentation mode is, is just. It feels as, 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 as Jen noted, it feels like a bit of a waste of time, um, of our time. Um, so, um. Along some other. Items, um, you know, also like one of the things that we had talked about as a committee was trying to have more details already put into the function codes. So that they have like the dropdown aspect to it. Where, you know, you wouldn't just see purchase services or other purchase services, you would actually see what the items were purchased in that department. Um, that also has not been adjusted for and um, and. You know, one more reminder is that we still have not, we did allocate some money into the F Y twenty-five budget for um. Budgeting software upgrades um, that uh, has not been purchased. And um, has not been reviewed. Uh, we had some notes in the interim report that we submitted uh, before we were dissolved. Um, that uh, you know, suggested some other possible softwares to look at. And while Munis may be uh, ahead of the curve and the preferred uh, product, since it matches up with what the town does. And could possibly produce a product similar to the town's budget in detail and organization. Um, it is, I think we need to do our due diligence as a board to, to review what other options are out there along with Munis. And then actually have that vote and make that decision and allocate that money. And, and I am very curious to know where, I believe is a hundred fifty thousand? That had been allocated or possibly three hundred thousand, I forget.
One fifteen, I think.
One fifteen, one one five, all right, so where that money went into the budget for F Y twenty-five, since it was not spent on budget software. Um. And for the sake of time, I'm going to uh, not go into any more length about that. I would just encourage, oh, well, one more thing. The remaining budget policy revisions proposed, as proposed by the committee. The P three one two zero, three one six zero and thirty-two hundred. I believe need to take a, a, a priority um, in the policy committee meeting that's, that's uh, gonna be scheduled in the very near future.
It's scheduled for the eleventh, and to that we're going to be adding with um, review of the uh, sexual harassment.
I thought uh, you said you were gonna schedule one within the next week or so.
I can try to do that.
Um, my concern has to do with three one two zero in particular because that one has to do with like um, instructing the budget document. And um, some aspect of communications in there as far as things that are specific to being guidance. So um, and three one six zero has to do with transfer between budget functions. And thirty-two hundred has to do with transfer between budget categories.
So Andrea and Ian, would you give me your availabilities this coming week and we'll see what we can do?
I have something every night this week.
And the. Well, we, we.
But the committee can meet without these, can it, yes. Uh, I would pre.
He's got his plate full.
Oh, I think this is that special meeting just on the sexual harassment you're talking about.
No, no, we're talking about the, the, the.
Oh, doing. We have stuff on the agenda from the last policy committee meeting that was not handled.
We, we, we met several hours and uh. But if we can get these three things done in the next week, that would be lovely.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really like.
Is there somebody you, you just give, give thought and give, is there somebody you could designate to represent you? And we can. I know, I know.
As press, I guess we can carry on as we need to. Um, so that, that's all I have to say about that. And um, I'm glad to hear that we have committed to February fifth as a pivot date where we want to see. I would just ask that we get a clean copy. Fresh little document so that we can discard or just like put these, all these little drafts on the shelf. It starts fresh, we start, thank you.
Okay, um. Two things. Um, Anne Marie wanted to do, since you all had questions about the I B program. Anne Marie wanted to do a presentation on February the third before a, a budget meeting. Um, I'm throwing that out there, if you guys wanna, how long would the presentation be, like an hour?
No.
Half an hour?
Half an hour.
Okay, with questions, an hour for the board.
Did we?
Let's be realistic, I mean.
An hour.
Yeah, but then questions on the board. Yeah, right.
But we review those.
Well.
Well, remember Adrian and some other people have questions about the, I, you don't, we don't have to have it February third. I'm just throwing it out there, she's ready to give us a presentation on I B program.
Would like it.
Yeah, students would talk about.
Well, and the um, parents more, yeah.
So if you wanted to hear that on February the third before the budget. It would be from six to seven, say, and then we'll do budget, but it's up to you guys.
Can we spare the time from you, pal, can we spare the time, we need the whole three hours?
You could say this is a yes or no question, Mike, yes or no?
Um, I, I, I wouldn't wanna do it before we get the super, like before we're done with the superintendent's budget phase.
You wanna do it after?
That'd be my preference, cuz we'll be talking about those larger issues.
Okay, so that's a no, yes or no?
No.
No, yes or no?
No, in March.
Yes or no?
I'm excited to hear, but I don't think it should happen back there.
Okay, no, yes or no? No, no, okay, there you go, Susan. And the other thing, my other thing is, this is yes or no. Oh, Adrian, I'm sorry, what was you, a yes or no?
No.
Now, Jay?
No.
Okay, the other thing is the superintendent's goals, Susan gave us her revised goals, right? This is a yes or no question, do you wanna go over her revised goals with her? Or do you want to just drop it?
You guys had recommended.
Okay, do you wanna review that, the revised goals with Susan at a meeting at some point? Or do you wanna just accept the goals as she revised them and move on? Yes or no, do you wanna meet with Susan, yes or no?
Months of this year to get these goals done, just saying.
I'd be fine with that.
You wanna meet with Susan?
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Yes.
I know the time is.
Yes.
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 Yes, ma, uh, Jay?
Yes.
Yes, and Andrea?
There's Susan's goals for heaven's sake, not ours, no.
Right, now, well, you're outnumbered. Sorry. All right, so we'll have to plan when we're gonna meet with Susan and look at her goals again.
I'll be ready for next year's goals.
But that's, that's fine.
I'm just gonna carry it forward for the next two years.
That's fine.
Have we decided what we're gonna do or whether we're gonna adopt January thirty at this meeting day?
Yeah, but we're in the advanced planning one, right, can we just?
January thirtieth, uh, are you available?
I got an appointment and I gotta see if I can get out of it, I don't know.
So as of now, we're not, I'll let you know.
Very well.
Okay, uh, Andrea?
What? Okay, cool.
Are, are you want me to say what you usually say?
Oh, my goodness, is that, I have something to say before, before I say that. Okay. Yes, listen, before I say what I always say, I have something to say. And that is, when I signed up for Board of Ed, I did not sign up for this. This is insane, motion to adjourn, good night.
Okay, thank you, I know it's late. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, we are adjourned.